Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Murphy will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Murphy be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Are there any other apologies? Thank you councillors, I draw to your attention the motion of appreciation at item two on the agenda. Lord Mayor, will you please move the motion?
Thank you, Mr Chair. As this is the last council meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contribution they have made during 2021 to make Brisbane a better place to live, work and relax.
Seconded. I move so. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that as this is the last council meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contribution they have made during 2021 to make Brisbane a better place to live, work and relax. Is there any debate?
Well, not really debate, but I am more than happy to talk about our thanks for the great work that many people at work for this organisation have put in over the last 12 months and also want to thank councillor Cassidy for his bipartisan support of the motion and the bipartisanship shown for this motion of special appreciation. Now, we know Christmas is a time for friends and family, it's a time hopefully to recharge the batteries and have a bit of downtime, but it is also a time to show gratitude to those who have improved our lives and improved the lives of our city. And that is where our fantastic council workers come into play. And I want to say thank you on behalf of not only our team of councillors here, but also the residents of the city of Brisbane for the hard work that has been done over the last 12 months. We know it's been a challenging time, we know things have continued to evolve in many ways and we know that our organisation and the people that work for it have adapted really well and really quickly and been nimble in continually changing circumstances. And there's been some incredible things achieved despite those challenging circumstances and that is something that makes me very proud. I'm proud of every single person that works for this council and whether they are full-time employees, whether they are employed part-time or casually, or whether they are contractors, they are all important to us and we appreciate them all. Now, there's been a lot of adaptation done this year, but the people that collect the rubbish and maintain the parks and footpaths and roads, who have those outdoor jobs, they've continued to work hard, as have those working in our offices indoors, in our libraries and in so many other facilities that are important, as are our bus operators and the people that maintain the buses as well. And so, there are a number of sections of council that have had to change the way that they do things significantly and whether they are some of our office-based workers who have transitioned from to working from home and to remotely and then to back again and then maybe back again, the same process back and forward a number of times, they've continued to do a fantastic job for the people of Brisbane and the city of Brisbane. Or whether it's the staff in our 33 libraries who have adapted to the way that they provide services and, you know, sometimes it comes down to simple things like the need to make sure the books are appropriately sanitised when they come back and I remember seeing very clearly what the process is to do that. It is a simple thing, but it actually was a significant change to the way they had to do their job in the libraries. And same thing goes for our pools and community halls and the various other facilities that we operate and in particular the libraries and the way that they geared up to provide online services and making use of that online facility and use of ebooks, it's been just so fantastic the way they've adapted and they are just one example of so many. Festivals is another area where we support as an organisation, as a council and our staff support so many different festivals and community events throughout the year. And once again, these are things that have had to change as a result of the restrictions we had and the changing circumstances throughout the year. We saw at various times of the year, many events were either postponed or cancelled as a result of the restrictions in place at the time and once again, our staff have been fantastic in working with community organisations to adapt. It does seem though like all of the events that were cancelled earlier this year have been held in the last few weeks. Does anyone else feel like that? It's just, it's been full on, but it's been great to see. Once again, thank you to the staff that support our festivals, but also to our community organisations, sports groups and not-for-profit. We saw the remarkable flexibility and success of the COVID-19 assistance grants that were paid directly to more than 300 different organisations across the city, whether they're sporting or community organisations. And those grants were paid generally within two weeks. So, within two weeks of receiving an application, the grants were paid and since then, we've replaced them with the Better Suburbs Grants, which are also, which relatively fast turnaround and I think at the moment, we're looking at about a four-week turnaround, which is fantastic. So, once again, there's so many people in council working to make sure they adapt to these circumstances that we're in and they've done a fantastic job. The personal interaction that we've all had with council staff, whether it's in person or via Teams meetings or Zoom calls, has been so important to assist us in the work that we do. And as we had a discussion just recently in the chamber, the 27 people in this room may be the council, but all of those people, the 10,000 people that work for the council and support the council enable us to achieve amazing things for this city. It's been great to be able to acknowledge some of the excellent outcomes that we've seen through a series of awards. Just this morning, I was at the Brisbane Infrastructure Awards where we had several hundred people in a room together celebrating the achievements of the Brisbane Infrastructure Division. And that was everything from new technology when it comes to mosquito management and the creation here in Brisbane of the world's first electronic mosquito lure. Did you know about that? It was, it's a little device created here by council officers that literally lures mosquitoes in so that they can be trapped and analysed for the different types of mosquitoes we have and then strategies can be implemented to deal with those. And so, that was a world first here in Brisbane. It's been, it's been a fantastic outcome and that is just one of so many innovative stories that we've heard from our council workers. Another acknowledgement that was given today was for the team that delivered the Citylink Cycleway, a project that in normal circumstances would have taken significantly longer and would have cost significantly more, but they were able to gear up in a very short period of time to adapt to the changing circumstances, to adapt to the fact that fewer people were in the CBD at the time and roll out some very important infrastructure for our city that continues to be well-used. And Billy agrees. And last Friday night, we had the Lord Mayor's Awards for Excellence and we saw yet again a number of amazing examples of the teams of people who have achieved incredible things and adapted to difficult situations. One of the, one of the winners of that awards group was the group of people who responded to the Adelaide Street land slippage. Now, I don't know if you remember that, but it was, is that the entrance to the Ivory Street Tunnel? And literally, we had a situation where a tree and significant amount of rocks fell off the cliff face and onto the road in the Ivory Street Tunnel. And that required a whole of council response virtually across many different sections to deal with it. Everything from not only the clean-up and response effort, but also the engineering to make sure that the cliff face was stable and we wouldn't have further slippage or breaking away of the cliff. But then, simple things like all the traffic closures that had to happen and the diversion of bus routes and a whole range of other flow-on effects. This is not business as usual, this was an emergency situation and the team responded amazingly and once again, they were one of the winners of the awards last year. So, these are just a few examples of so many and by mentioning a few, I certainly don't want to offend all of the other people that have done amazing work, but these are just some examples of the incredible work that has been achieved. Now, I could list off a whole range of projects, but you know about all those projects that are happening and are gearing up. So, I particularly wanted to thank all of the council workers for the work that they've done, from the top of the organisation, Colin Jensen and our executive management team, right the way through the organisation to those on the front line, out in the suburbs, doing the work each day to maintain this wonderful city that we live in. So, I want to thank each and every one of you and also to wish you a Merry Christmas on behalf of the people of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers?
Councillor Cassidy. Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to contribute to the motion of appreciation for council workers. When 2021 began, we thought it would be a very different year to 2020, certainly wasn't the case. It was slightly different, but more challenging in some ways and 2021, I think, was tough for everyone in council as they continued to battle their way through the reality of COVID-19 and what that meant for them in their workplaces. But we are here, we made it through and for those who have been on the front line, particularly it's time soon to relax, unwind with the family and loved ones and friends and to reconnect in person, especially with the borders reopening as well. The Labor team here in council is beyond grateful to the efforts of those almost 10,000 council employees and contractors who put in an enormous effort this year. The tireless work of those council officers sets this city apart from the rest. So, thank you and thank you to your families as well for helping you put in the hard yards this year, not only to get the job done, but get the job done in a year that was as turbulent and uncertain as 2021 has been. We think this council still has a way to go in terms of making workplaces safer and wages fairer and the Labor team vows to continue to fight for and beside you in this chamber here. We will keep up the battle for better working conditions, secure employment and greater rights. As a Northsider, I want to give a special mention to the council mosquito control team, especially with the La Niña season in full swing now. They are a small team of just 17 tasked with covering thousands of hectares of difficult terrain to spray to keep us safe. We won't stop our calls in this place to make sure that team has more support and more resources as they do the job that we all need them to do out there. I want to give a huge shout-out to all of the teams right across the city and those that are in my patch, we will touch base directly, but those teams that are on the front line, out on the ground, that make our jobs so much more rewarding in dealing with local residents, particularly in arbiculture, program planning and integration formerly known, I think, as asset services through some different iterations, our parks teams, compliance and regulatory services who have a tough job on the front line, news branch in the natural areas, environment, water and sustainability and there are other areas that fall under there, including parks, the city pools team, all those transport offices in both the transport planning area and transport network operations, the grants unit, the city administration and governance team that help us out in our day-to-day businesses, councillors, the graffiti team, community halls, development services and planning teams that we talk to probably on a weekly basis, sometimes a daily basis, it feels like, our library staff and those other asset services staff as well out doing that hard work on the ground. And of course, those frontline staff who battled through numerous and repeated COVID lockdowns and what that meant in terms of working from home for someone who's out in the field, it was a whole, a whole new ball game for that and to do that in the way in which they did was certainly appreciated and inspiring for us. Our bus drivers did it especially tough and we know a lot of those casuals, casual drivers were, had to fill in for vulnerable permanent drivers, so we appreciate the work that they have put in and gone over and above over the last year here. The team here in City Hall that we see here on a weekly basis and some of us more regularly as well, Helma, Lucy, Melissa and Alina and to Billy down the back there, thank you very much for everything you do here and to the newest member of that team, Daisy as well. To Billy, Aaron Craig, Hope and the rest of the IT team, thank you for your endless support. I'm sure you get some curly ones from us sometimes about making sure that our online environment works for us. Hybrid meetings have been a challenging but necessary adaptation to the way we do business in this place and council meetings in the current age would be far from possible without your devoted efforts and that IT team. To the committee clerks who prepare for these meetings and support the work of the council chamber in our committee meetings on most sitting days apart from today, your work is great and wonderful and we appreciate everything that you do and we have been keeping you on your toes this year, I know. I'm sure Ashley will appreciate the break from getting the files ready for me every Friday on level 23, so very Merry Christmas, Ashley. A big thanks to Penelope Haywood in Information Services who we bombard with requests for information. Thank you for always being one step ahead and so prepared and your efforts up there on level eight do not go unnoticed. To Leonie Motum, thank you for being so approachable, so supportive, to me and my fellow councillors and our staff and all of the councils here and all our staff. We in our ward offices and chair offices and opposition office certainly wouldn't operate as smooth as we do without you. And finally, to the team in the ward offices and my office and here in City Hall, I certainly couldn't and I know no councillor could do the job without them. Some of my staff have been with me since the very start and others have joined this wild ride very recently, as recently as last month in one case. You as staff have helped us and the opposition team keep the administration to account, which is important in the system we have and I appreciate your support immensely. So, a shout-out to Victoria, Tristan, Tom and Jess here in City Hall and of course, Jenna, Maura and Quinn out of the ward office, I'm sure they're listening along today. My message to all council employees is please enjoy your break and return to work next year with the confidence that the Labor team in City Hall will always have your back.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to speak on the motion before us as our staff deserve thanks and recognition for their efforts again this year. I want to say how proud I am of the people who work for Brisbane City Council, who are dedicated to serving the people of this city and are committed to making Brisbane even better. From our award-winning 24-hour contact centre staff to our bus drivers, every role plays an important part in serving our community. Just like our City Hall clock, every member forms an important colk in the wheel of our city. I know it's dangerous to mention a few, but the passion and energy from the following offices is definitely worthy of a mention. John Thompson from PPI ensures that our Centenary Memorial Gardens look spectacular all year round. He regularly tends to the area, even outside of work hours, to ensure the space is respectful and welcoming. He goes above and beyond the call of duty and his passion for the environment is infectious. Lucas Thomas from Transport Planning and Operations is an exceptional engineer who always provides great advice and solutions. His friendly disposition and professional manner makes him a delight to deal with. Sadly, we'll be losing him at the end of the year as we'll be focusing on his new little bug. We wish him all the best. Peter De Zarevik, the can-do man of the West. You could not find a more efficient and esteemed person in roads and drainage. He is the king of delivery and we are so lucky to have someone of his calibre in our team. Gino Costin, a phenomenal sport and rec officer who has been transformational for so many of my community groups. Thank you for your energy and attitude, you are loved by so many of my community. Council has a very visionary and practical playground genius in an officer named Shane Klepper. He provides sage advice and wisdom that can't be found anywhere else. Shane has created a legacy in the western suburbs and while he is often busy on the phone, his tenacity, energy and dedication is acknowledged by councillors far and wide. Di Currie, our chief planner, who is leading the charge in preparing our city for the Olympics and Paralympics and beyond. She lives and breathes the programme and I know that we are in safe hands with her at the helm. Finally, I would like to acknowledge our ward staff who go above and beyond to serve our communities. Behind every great councillor, there is a tribe of amazing staff. Thank you for all that you do for us and the residents of Brisbane. We all have Lucases, Johns and Dides in our region and they make a huge difference to our city. Thank you to all of our staff for their passion and dedication to Brisbane. We wish you all a very Merry Christmas and we look forward to working with you again in 2022.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the motion and I think the best present I can probably give to council officers is to keep my comments as short as possible so that we minimise the length of this meeting. So, I will simply say to all the officers and staff we've worked with over the year, thank you so much for your hard work, we really do appreciate it and have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chair. Today, I rise to speak on this special motion and on behalf of my eastside councillors, I want to say thank you. Thank you to our council staff who help us day in and day out on our very weird and quirky requests we always have for them. But as the Lord Mayor said, 2021 wasn't too much different to 2020, a year of unknowns and having to quickly adapt to the health advice of the day. So, we thank our council officers so much for helping us in this. But today, I really wanted to say a special thank you to the regional manager for the east, Kieran Sweeney. As many of us would know on the east side, she's retiring at the end of this year of 31 years. So, let's go back a little. Kieran began her employment as a teenager in the late 1980s at the iconic New Farm Park. For someone who loves preserving and enhancing our environment, gardens and park space, New Farm Park wouldn't have been on the top of her list, but she was amazing. I'm sure Kieran has a special place in her heart to this day for this iconic spot by the Brisbane River. Kieran has served our city in various roles, bringing her cheery nature and grace to all places and all people she's encountered along the way. She's had the role of a technical officer in park, Habitat Brisbane Officer, parks coordinator role and most recently, the manager for regional. She firstly started out in the west in 2013 and she always reminds me that west know how to throw a good Christmas party. So, we've let you down a little in the east, Kieran, we haven't thrown you on, but she's joined us in 2018 and over the last few years, I've thoroughly enjoyed getting to know Kieran and her support for me and many of the other eastside councillors, I'm sure. She has a real passion for parks and natural environment and her community. I know she, I know that her passion goes beyond her working life. She's been a great contributor and a resource in knowledge to her local bush care and garden groups. Kieran, we wish you well. We wish you a long and happy retirement, but I always hear retirement's actually busier than a working life, so all the best with that one. But thank you is seriously not enough. Kieran, we thank you for your 31 years with council and we wish you all the best, but we're very excited to welcome Chris Jamison to fill this role. I hear from Vicky that he is amazing and he'll do a terrific job, but to every single council officer, we thank you so very, very much and we wish you a very Merry Christmas.
Yes, I rise to sport, oh sorry, I rise to speak in support of the motion as well. I want to put on the record my thanks to all of the former Asset Service South staff. Unfortunately, they're in a state of flux at the moment without knowing where their jobs and their roles might go. Some have secured new positions in the new hierarchy, but not everyone. I want to thank them for their work over the past year and in looking after the operational aspects of community and park life and roads in Tennyson Ward. They do a lot with little, we don't really get any capital, so it's just the suburban enhancement fund monies that we stretch out and they do a great job with that. I also just want to put on the record my thanks very briefly for all the call centre staff and the business hotline staff, all our wonderful library staff. There's been some challenges at Fairfield Library this year and Fung and her team have dealt with it with great kindness and I think consideration for staff there. And all of the libraries in my ward do an absolutely wonderful job. Thank you to all the bus drivers, the street cleaners, the mowers, Shirley and Jim in the grants team, Leonie and her team up at councillor support. I agree, she deserves a huge amount of praise. Hopefully, that's not the kiss of death to poor Leonie by me saying that, but she does a great job behind the scenes, helping our officers logistically and financially. So, thank you very much to Leonie. To all the attendants and clerks here in the chamber, thank you so much for looking after us during the year. And I do particularly want to thank the IT team, it has been a nightmarish year for the computers and the telephones and I don't know why. I know they're working very hard behind the scenes to keep us running and poor Craig's got my computer out there now trying to get the camera to work. So, thank you all very much to James and all the team, Billy, Craig, Aaron and James. We greatly appreciate all the support. Just want to say particularly to my staff, thank you very much. We've had, we've had a great year, a very busy year, a very, I think, complex year in many ways and we're ending the year, you know, with a lot going on. So, thank you to my three staff who do a wonderful job serving Tennyson Ward residents. I do want to say to the Lord Mayor and the CEO who couldn't even be bothered to come down for the last meeting of the year to receive the vote of thanks on behalf of the council officers, but I'll get to him in a minute, that I raised this last week, I'm going to raise it as often as I can, my staff have found out that they are paid less superannuation than ordinary council officers and that is not acceptable in my view. They should be paid the same. It is unreasonable that our ward office staff who run like a mini call centre but do way more than that, they have to have specialty knowledge across every division of council and the fact that this Lord Mayor and CEO are paying them less in superannuation than other council officers is not acceptable in my view. And I think that it sends a very clear message to staff today that the CEO of council could not be bothered to come down to the final meeting of the year. There is a deficit of leadership at the top of this council, that is the Lord Mayor and the CEO that I am referring to. This council does not run for the whole city, it only runs for the LMP council team. There is a distinct lack of funding and resources to vital areas of council and our staff cannot fix all the problems, they cannot fix all the footpaths, they cannot sort out all the mosquitoes, they just cannot physically do all the work because there are not enough people and there is not enough money. Meanwhile, the Lord Mayor has millions that he spends on advertising and marketing and essential services in this city where our staff work really hard to address concerns raised by the public are underfunded. This year, council has really, I think, disappointingly restructured the operational part of council and that has caused a huge amount of confusion and concern. And the fact that we're now to Christmas and there are some staff who we've worked with for years who don't know what their job is going to be in the new year, that is just wrong. It is wrong and I'm disappointed in the way that that played out and it, I feel, I feel for the staff. I think the LMP has let you down here in doing this change, which does not seem to have a lot of purpose to me. I mean, what's going to happen next year, is it just one councillor on the north side going to stand up and one for the south side when they do their vote of thanks? I mean, regions don't even exist anymore. So, I just think that whilst our staff and our contractors are working as hard as they can, they're not necessarily getting the support from the Lord Mayor or the CEO of council. But I do want to say, I hope everybody has a great break over Christmas. I think unfortunately, 2022 is going to be very challenging again with the health environment. The Lord Mayor's weasel words this morning on radio didn't help in terms of how council's going to deal with COVID and we really need some clarity going forward about how council is going to operate in the new arrangements coming into the new year. So, I urge the Lord Mayor and the CEO to get on with, you know, making some plans so that we can operate in a seamless way that the community understands and accepts. Merry Christmas to everybody, have a very safe and festive break.
Further speakers? Councillor Landers.
Thank you, Chair, and I would like to add to this motion in the
Thank you Chair and I would like to add to this motion in the actual spirit of its intention and take the opportunity to thank our council officers in the north who contribute so much to our great city. The passion and dedication they show, whether it be our parks, libraries, refuse centre, environment centres or officers involved in delivering better roads, it doesn't go unnoticed and I want to acknowledge their dedication to making our city even better. I have to say that when I first became a councillor, I was absolutely blown away with the officers who look after our parks and the friendly competitive banter that goes on with them. They love the parks that they are responsible for and they are just as excited about the improvements and additions that we are making in our local parks and each believes that they have the best part. We do. It is so wonderful to be surrounded by people who have such passion for their work. The 24 hour call centre situated in termsoe really should have a special mention as without this team, the rest wouldn't respond so efficiently and respond they do. I know that I can have complete confidence when I report a pothole that it will be responded to quickly. And of course, on behalf of my fellow councillors, I do thank our hardworking ward staff who are also at the coalface of the Brisbane City Council and their patience and commitment to delivering outcomes and providing a timely response to residents is exemplary. I know they work together with council officers and other ward officers to ensure delivery and service to the residents of Brisbane and we thank them. There are so many people that I don't want to mention them all in case I, or try to mention them because there are so many and forget anyone, but I really wish everyone the very, very best for Christmas and I hope they do get a well-earned rest at some point. I'm excited about 2022 and I can't wait to get back to work with our officers on delivering for our community.
Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you Mr Chair. I rise to speak to the motion before us today to appreciate the hard work of the council officers delivering to the people of Brisbane. Mr Chair, 2021 has been a challenging year and the people of Brisbane facing many uncertainties. But there's one thing they can be certain of and that is the Shirena Council has continued to provide the leadership and best services to the people of Brisbane and make sure Brisbane keeps getting better. On behalf of the Southside councillors, I would like to thank officers of the South Region for their diligence and hard work in delivering the quality work people of Brisbane is and will continue to enjoy. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the officers in the South Region, including but not limited to Dyckharnas, Barry Childs, Martin McNamara, Anastasia Brown, Tom McHugh, Daniel Glidden, Simon Butterworth, Sarah Torrance, Jeffrey Yu, Sarah Bishop, Michael Moheran, Chris Barrelot, Mark Ramers, Michael Griffin, Kieran Freeheron, Rajiv Chhatta, Melvin Bow, Nick Hurson, Oliver Cooper, Dave Balasteros, Kyle Box, Paul J, Glenn Davison, Frank Griffin, Tim McCoy, Paul Cusack, Shirley Ems and Leonie Mouton. And also to the support from LMS Office, LMS Admin Office and also to all the ward office staff. And last but not least, thank the chamber clerks and the supporting staff for putting up with us, for all these meetings. Yeah, and I would like to just conclude with everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and also a safe Christmas and don't forget to sign up to the weather alert.
Thank you Councillor Huang. Any further speakers? Lord Mayor. I'll now put the motion. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,667th meeting held on Tuesday 30 November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,667th meeting of council held on the 30th of November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant here today, I'd like to call on Dr Christine Hosking who wants to address council or the chamber on the draft Brisbane off-road cycling strategy. Billy's just showing Dr Hosking up to the chair. Dr Hosking, you'll have five minutes when the microphone's turned on, you can stand or sit according to your preference, over to you.
Thank you for the invitation to address council today. I'm here representing the Brisbane Bushlands Alliance, a large group of ecologists, botanists, entomologists and bush carers who collectively have devoted decades of volunteer time to protecting and restoring Brisbane's bushlands. We're really worried about the off-road cycling strategy and its implications for the unique biodiversity in our remaining bushland reserves. I'm a landscape ecologist and I understand a little bit about species and humans and their interactions in landscapes. Plants and animals suffer when they're subjected to disturbance and loss and fragmentation, even at fine scales, it's highly complex. There's plenty of scientific evidence for this. Therefore, we're particularly concerned about the construction of single trails, those designed for downhill high-speed riding, not the pump tracks in suburban parks or family cycling. Tuie Forest, for example, is a bushland reserve designated in the strategy for mountain bike single trails, but the soils in Tuie are very poor and unstable. The forest is still recovering from being cleared decades ago. It has a large and growing koala population and while koalas can tolerate humans more than some other species, it is not that simple. The reason for the drastic decline in southeast Queensland's koalas and the reason they're all sick with disease is because so much of their habitat is now fragmented or gone and what is left is of poor quality, offering them scant nutrition. They're really struggling and forests like Tuie and White's Hill, where they're breeding, should be kept as healthy and undisturbed as possible. There are two powerful alpares in Tuie also, they're more sensitive than koalas and need peace and quiet to roost during the day. They are listed as vulnerable in Queensland. Carrawattah Forest is another example, it has a thriving population of many frog species and they breed in fragile temporary ponds. Even the uncommon green thide frog is present. We've also seen several greater gliders in the middle of the forest in a hilly section, it's likely that mountain bike tracks will be built there. Greater gliders like koalas are listed as vulnerable under the EPBC Act, which is the highest environmental legislation in Australia. But it's not just bigger animals that are at peril, the collared delma is a small legless lizard. It's a rare reptile that has been recorded from undisturbed open forests around Brisbane and is also listed as vulnerable under the EPBC Act. It inhabits rocks and gravel and has a small home range of just a few metres, so disturbing rocks and gravel, if it's inhabiting, can decimate an entire population. The beautiful Richmond burrowing butterfly has become extinct in Brisbane. It is listed as vulnerable in Queensland but was one so common that it said people would swap them out of the way in Queen Street. But their one and only food source is a very plain looking vine that is easily pushed out of the way. I could go on. Constructing new single trails will not stop illegal trails being built. I know this from direct observations over many years in many places because the nature of this sport is to continuously find new challenges and new experiences. We can talk about best practice and trail care, but the facts remain. The initial construction of these trails will cause significant environmental damage. The ongoing use of these trails will cause ongoing habitat disturbance and degradation and illegal trails will continue to be made. E-mountain bikes are proliferating and they're motorised vehicles. If you ride motocross, you don't expect to have venues provided all over the city, nor do you expect to be able to ride them in fragile protected areas. Mountain biking is a high-impact sport that is simply not ecologically appropriate in many of the fragile natural areas currently proposed in the off-road cycling strategy. This is a Mount Cootha Forest management plan, it was prepared in 2003. It's an excellent and comprehensive document, even describes threats. One, I quote, 'development of new tracks by select groups, e.g. mountain bikers'. So why is this management plan being ignored? When mountain biking was established in Mancouthar, senior citizens who'd been walking on the tracks for years were threatened with fines and bird watchers no longer walked there because the birds had gone and the bikes were intimidating. So has social equity been considered in this strategy? These bushlands are for all citizens, as special places to relax and learn about nature. Degraded bushlands, lost scenic amenity and lost species are very difficult to restore. We ask that alternative venues be investigated and they already exist on private properties and we call for a new bushland conservation strategy for Brisbane, perhaps based on this plan as a model. Surely this must precede any off-road cycling strategy. Thank you Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors for your time and for listening.
Thank you Dr Hosking. Councillor Davis, are you responding? Thank you.
Well, thank you Chair and thank you Dr Hosking for coming in today and sharing your thoughts around the off-road cycling strategy. As you are aware, back in 2020, we undertook consultation with the community and we had quite a deal of response to that, nearly 3,500 pieces of either survey or direct feedback to inform what the off-road strategy might look like. It's a challenge, we have to balance opportunities for recreation but making sure that we are looking at the environmental impacts that off-road cycling can cause in areas where our environment is more susceptible and you've spoken about some of those areas today. Please be assured that this was not a quick consultation and review of the feedback that we got, it's been nearly 12 months, so officers have really looked at this very, very carefully. And what we hope to achieve in the strategy is try and find a balance between off-road cycling opportunities while protecting our environment. Now, I understand that you're coming to see me on Friday and we can have a further chat about this, but thank you very much for coming in today and sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you. Really will see you out. Thank you Dr Hosking. Councillors, before we continue, I'd just like to advise that the meeting's local law that we debated last week has not yet been gazetted the state government, so this meeting has been conducted under the previous meeting's local law. The new meeting's local law will come into effect from the first meeting in February. Thank you very much. Question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, Councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, can you update the chamber on some of the achievements in your portfolio throughout 2021, including securing the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games?
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair and thank you Councillor Hutton for the question because it has been an enormous year 2021 and as we heard in our thank you to council officers, not as easy as we thought it was going to be at the end of 2020 and probably still going to be some stresses next year. But while we navigated through the continual issues that the pandemic threw up, at the same time, we did maintain those services that our residents expect. I have had the honour this year of chairing two committees across council, the Planning and Economic Development and now more recently Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. And there are so many good stories coming out of the year that has been across those two committees. To start the year off, within the Economic Development, we had the Brisbane Business Summit, bringing together over 300 businesses at the Pullman Hotel. The feedback from this event was extremely positive and there was a keen interest for it to be an annual event, which we are now doing and looking forward to our 2022 Brisbane Business Summit and preparations are underway right now with announcements early in the new year when we all get back as well. We also kept our focus on businesses in a local way by opening the Suburban Business Hub in Nunda. The hub continues to grow in popularity and it sees strong visitation during the week. It remains open Monday to Friday and has A-grade facilities for small businesses that want to hold meetings, events or forums, or for council when we hold meetings, events or forums. Quite obviously with the name of the committee, the biggest achievement of this council for 2021 was the securing of the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games and the actual amount of work done by the council officers that are now in the Brisbane City Host Office cannot be underestimated. There was plenty of work through the 90-plus questions that we needed to make sure that we had answered for the future host agreement that were solely and wholly based on the council responses and the responsibilities that council will do to make sure that those Olympic Games are a success. July 21 was definitely the day of the year, plenty of residents will remember that for the rest of their life and not just because it was one of the coldest days that we had this year as well. It was all about our great city and being voted an Olympic city for 2032, something that they can now never take off us. It was a landslide vote 72 to 5 and as I've said, we'll find those five, Lord Mayor, but we were emphatically backed by the IOC and we can tell you that it is now in a safe pair of hands as we move through with the three levels of government in the coming 10 years. The excitement continues to gain traction and those who were sceptical about hosting at first are now on board and we've got a huge 11-year, nearly 10 and a half years now runway to prepare a successful games and probably, hopefully, and I'm going to say definitely smash Sydney 2000 out of the park. In more recent news, the Shirena Council has launched the highly successful Brisbane App. It's our latest initiative to keep Brisbane the most small business-friendly council in Australia. It came out of an idea through the Economic Recovery Task Force and it's something that has actually gained more momentum than we could possibly imagine. Right now, there are more than 120,000 downloads of this app and each user spends an average of 25 minutes on the app when they open it. That is a phenomenal measure in any social media targets, but it's showing us that people are using it exactly for what we wanted them to use it for, to search and find new and exciting local offerings to fill their weekends. And we make no apologies for providing a platform that small businesses can very easily get their name and ID out and about to visitors, friends and relatives and our locals as we open the borders next Monday. Also, in September this year, we convened the Asia-Pacific City Summit. Despite international borders being extremely difficult to navigate, or not at all able to navigate, the summit was a total success with over 700 physical delegates representing over 70 countries. There were 100 speakers, presenters and as well as 87 exhibitors who were showcasing their businesses, organisations or companies. Business relationships were formed throughout these three days, which meant for us, the summit was a huge success. Our shopfront activation programme partnered with dozen empty shopfronts with small-scale businesses to break into the brick and mortar operation. There were a significant number of home businesses that don't need to operate in a shopfront but they wanted to try and it was a great way to do that. Recently, we held our fourth and final meeting of the Small Business Roundtable for the new year and I'm looking forward to hearing more from our key industry stakeholders, how we can support those businesses to continue our economic growth and making sure that the Shirena Council is the most small business council in Australia.
Thank you for the questions. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's come to my attention that one of your LMP councillors has been using ratepayer funds for personal development courses. It's been revealed that an LMP councillor charged the people of Brisbane $1,925 for what's described as an advanced language techniques course with a company called Minds Tomorrow. From what we can find, the only language course this company offers are what's known as neuro-linguistic programming or NLP. According to some, NLP is a pseudo-scientific approach to communication, personal development and psychotherapy that was developed in the US in the 1970s. Lord Mayor, yes or no, do you think LMP councillors paying for personal development courses such as neuro-linguistic programming is a good use of ratepayers' money?
Lord Mayor.
Yeah, well, Mr Chair, I certainly don't accept the premise of the question and I think that if there was actually any kind of misuse of ratepayers' money, the way to go about it is not to ask a question in the council chamber, but you know what you need to do, Councillor Cassidy, you know what you need to do, because the last time I checked...
Point of order.
I acknowledge you on your feet, Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, well, the meeting's local laws say the Lord Mayor is not allowed to debate the question. He's also referring directly to Councillor Cassidy, so you can take your pick, but he has to answer the question, Mr Chair.
I believe the question is being answered. Councillor Johnston, Lord Mayor.
Well, what I heard was a, well, a claim dressed up as a statement, I didn't actually hear a question and this is business as usual for the leader of the opposition.
Chair, Councillor Cassidy.
The question was very clear, does the Lord Mayor think LMP councillors paying for personal development courses is an appropriate use of ratepayers' money?
There was a long premise to the question, Councillor Cassidy, the Lord Mayor is answering it.
So...
Councillor Johnston, please.
So, if there is any suggestion... So if there is any suggestion whatsoever or concern that there has been an inappropriate use of ratepayers' money, then all councillors know what they need to do. Because quite frankly, the level of scrutiny and the number of different organisations peering into councils across Queensland has never been greater. We've seen a lot of media commentary on that recently. So there are, there's a suite, there's a smorgasbord of options and...
Councillor Cassidy.
The question was whether the Lord Mayor thinks it's appropriate that LMP councillors are using ratepayers' money for personal development courses. We're not talking about the OIA or any other organisation, Chair. We're talking about this council.
Accepting the premise of what led to your question, Lord Mayor is responding to the issues raised. Lord Mayor.
Well, I'm not going to comment on a claim that's been made by councillor Cassidy when I am not aware of the circumstances or what he's referring to. So this is, this is news to me. But what I would say is that if you go up to, if you go up to Brisbane Square right now, council officers, as routine, get to participate in development courses. It's actually part of their employment conditions that they get the opportunity to do this. And in fact, it has been an expectation of my councillors...
The question was very specific, whether the Lord Mayor thinks it's appropriate for LMP councillors to use ratepayers' money for personal development courses. It's a yes or no answer.
I responded to that in your last interjection. Councillor Cassidy, Lord Mayor.
I think he'd like it better if he just asked a question or made a statement and then no one said anything. I think that's, that's what he's looking for here. What I was going to explain was that it is my expectation, for example, of my cabinet chairs as colleagues to do development courses. And in fact, I expect them to participate in the Australian Institute of Company Directors course because it delivers better outcomes. They are effectively directors on...
Councillor Johnston.
They are in fact directors on a board that runs the city. And so it is appropriate, it is appropriate that they engage in those kind of development courses, just as council officers, just as council managers do. So as I said, if councillor Cassidy has something that he's concerned about, he knows what to do.
Councillor Cassidy.
The Lord Mayor is not answering the question. We're not talking about professional development here. This is quite clearly about personal development. Does he think it's appropriate that LMP councillors are using ratepayers' money for that purpose?
There was a specific question at the end of your statement, councillor Cassidy. The Lord Mayor is addressing the issues you raised.
So as I was pointing out, it is appropriate that our councillors develop their skills. And so without knowing the specific example that councillor Cassidy is referring to, I know he's got a particular way with words, a particular way to throw the mud in a particularly devious way. And so I'm not going to comment on this particular case because I don't know the circumstances. And I'm not going to accept the premise of the question because we've seen time and time again, the leader of the opposition misrepresent the facts when it comes to a matter. And so, like I said, if there are concerns, councillor Cassidy knows what to do. He knows what to do. And so if it was indeed a very serious matter, then he would have taken serious action. But what we suspect is the case here is that there's been a wheelbarrow of mud wheeled into the chamber and he's going to go handful by handful and throw it. And that's what you do when you're desperate and you're in opposition. And so, look, I can simply say, I expect that all of us will take appropriate action when it comes to the development of skills because it makes you better at doing your job. And particularly when it comes to, as I said, councillors that are civic cabinet chairs, there's an expectation, just as we see council officers continuing to do development of their skills. It is appropriate. It is absolutely appropriate that we all develop our skills. And so I would simply say, that is my view. We should all be developing our skills. It is part of our job to be better and better at what we do and to grow the skills that we have. And those skills, as a councillor, come in a wide range of forms, wide range of forms. And so, as I said, I'll say it one more time. If councillor Cassidy has some serious concerns, he knows what to do.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, can you update the chamber on some of the achievements in your portfolio throughout 2021, including road upgrades in my ward of Brackenridge?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, thanks councillor Landers for the question. And she quite rightly identifies that how many road projects that have been delivered in Brackenridge could fill the full five minutes of a question. Also, I must also recognise your efforts, Mr Chair, as the previous Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, that your vital role in making sure that these projects did occur. I wish to wish all councillors a Merry Christmas. And in the spirit of Christmas, I would like the councillors to imagine the city as a tree, as a Christmas tree and as the projects delivered by Brisbane Infrastructure, the baubles and the tinsel that make the city sparkle. And as most councillors would know, Christmas trees are plastic and they come in parts. And I will now speak to each part of the Christmas tree, building from the base to the star, which I think, I think the star has been given away of the Christmas tree that is the Brisbane City local government area. But I will start at the base. I'll start at the Rochdale-Priestal intersection upgrade in Rochdale. It is literally in the bottom right-hand corner, the bottom southeast corner of the city, with one of the intersections, one of the, I should say, street corners is actually part of Logan City. This is a project where we'll be changing a busy roundabout into a signalised intersection, allowing safe movement for commuters and school students. As we move up our tree, we see the Newham and Wecker intersection proceeds...
Councillors, please. Councillor Wines, you have the floor.
Sorry, Chair.
Councillor Sri.
Just on relevance, was the question about Brackenridge?
And achievements in the portfolio, I think I heard councillor Wines.
The way I recall the question was including Brackenridge. So I appreciate that not all councillors appreciate effort and colour in the presentations and that many councillors here prefer to drone on and say very little of value or interest or to put any effort into their presentations, merely to Hector others. But I don't subscribe to that view. I very much think that some effort in your presentations is appreciated. And I think that it's very, very important. I think, I think it's very important that councillors make an effort not to be dry because I think there's some people in this place who really do take the drudgery to a new level. And I suspect we're going to see some of that deep into tonight.
Back to the answer, please, councillor Wines.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair. As I say, I'm going to need, I'm going to tell the council now, I'm going to need another question because of how much content I have and how much time has been taken up by the opposition asking me to get back and talk about roads. But I want, I want people to know that the road network is like, is like tinsel around our city. It makes life easier for people to get around. It makes it a safe and efficient place for people to drive around, for people to get to work, for people to get to recreation opportunities that they want to participate in. Now, as I say, project two on my list, I've only just begun, Newham and Wecker. It is on the boundary of councillor Adams and councillor Murphy's Ward and it is about making that intersection even safer and more efficient for our road network. It is a very heavily utilised intersection which is requiring this. For those people who don't know it, it's not far from the Bunnings on that part of town. Chelsea Rickett, I wanted, I wanted to be able to tell you that it was open and ready. But this weather event, this lanina that we're experiencing at the moment, has just kept pushing, pushing the date back for its finalisation ever so slightly over some time. But we are hopeful that we will be able to be using that fully operationally in January. Councillors rightly said that if my metaphor about a Christmas tree was to work and because of councillor Landers' particular interest in Brackenridge, I'm going to have to move to the star a little bit sooner than I wanted to. But Brackenridge has most definitely been the star this year and has been so many quality projects being delivered or being prepared to be delivered for North Brisbane, including this very week councillor Landers and I will be going out to the intersection of Norris and Barber and we're going to be, again, not Christmas lights, but they will be red and green and an orange, switched on on Friday for the Norris and Barber intersection. Part of a network of roads that this council is doing, that's Norris, Norris and Barber, Hoyland Street, part of a contiguous zone of work to improve the road network in Brackenridge Ward. As part of that, as part of that work, Hoyland Street, which we've discussed in this part, in this place in the past, is a road that has...
Councillor Wines, your time has expired.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Councillor, councillors, councillor Johnston, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Perhaps a little attention is needed there. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Last night I received an email from a Fairfield resident who has low vision, she's almost blind, and she's a Paralympian. She has experienced, including last night, two significantly dangerous pedestrian incidents at the corner of Annerley Road and Noble Street at Annerley. This is the area where councillor Sri and I moved a motion just a few weeks ago, calling on council to put in a green walk signal or a zebra crossing. How can you justify $20,000 of ratepayers' funds being spent on a junket to the Winter Olympics for councillor Adams, but not a safe crossing point for Paralympians to walk safely around their neighbourhood?
Lord Mayor.
Well, in relation to that specific example, happy to have a look at it and take that in, in the spirit in which it was intended because we're absolutely determined to make sure Brisbane keeps on getting safer, which is why we're investing records amounts in footpaths, footpath construction, footpath repairs. It's why we're investing in road and traffic upgrades to improve safety. It's why we're improving connections for pedestrians and cyclists with new infrastructure, including green bridges. So people's safety is at the forefront of what we do. It genuinely is. And one of the big things that I'm excited about with the Paralympics and the Olympics coming up is the opportunity to showcase what a friendly and accessible place Brisbane is when it comes to getting around on foot. And that is something that we are proud of. We have invested more than any other administration has invested in making Brisbane more accessible in all of the different forms that that comes in. Whether it was providing for our community the very first fully accessible bus fleet. We did that because in the past...
I note you on your feet, councillor Johnston.
Yes, relevance. The question was, how can you justify $20,000 for a junket to the Olympics for councillor Adams, but not a safe crossing point for Paralympians to walk safely around the neighbourhood?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I believe you started with an answer to that particular question, but you have five minutes to complete your answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Yes, as I was explaining, our commitment to accessibility and safety is unparalleled and unmatched by any administration in the city's history. And whether it comes down to simple things like the accessibility of the bus fleet, the bus stops that we've been working on across the city, the footpath investment...
Councillor Johnston, I acknowledge you on your feet.
Yeah, this question was clearly about being able to walk in a safe crossing point around a neighbourhood in Annerley. Buses didn't come up, none of this other stuff come up. It was about how money could be justified on a junket overseas instead of a pedestrian safety upgrade.
The question is about pedestrian...
Please store the Lord Mayor back.
The question is about pedestrian safety for people with disabilities and the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
I think once again councillor Johnston would just prefer to make a statement and then not have anyone respond to that because, but we've seen both councillor Johnston and councillor Cassidy continually interrupt because they don't like the answer. And that is again and again what we're seeing here. I'm explaining this council's commitment to accessibility and safety. And it is, as I said, unparalleled. We are, we are leading Australia when it comes to our investment and the volume of investment, the quantity of investment in all of these things that make our city safer and more accessible. And we will continue to be at the forefront. And so when it comes to local suburban improvements, you know, happy to have a look at that. And it'd be nice to have a local project that happens in Tennyson Ward that is not opposed by the local councillor or undermined by the local councillor because you see time and time again, anything that this council wants to do in Tennyson Ward, it's never good enough for the councillor and chances are the councillor will oppose that project because she knows better. She knows better. So let's see about this particular project, happy to have a look at it. And as for the Olympic and Paralympic Games, it's a great opportunity to showcase our city as an accessible place, a place that is welcoming and friendly to people that may have a disability and a, and a city that is inclusive. And that's one of the great opportunities with the 2032 Games. And that is one of the opportunities that councillor Adams is going to be exploring in detail in her portfolio, but also in the much-needed technical visits that need to happen in preparation for the Olympic and Paralympic Games.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Adam. Councillor Johnston, I see you on your feet.
Yeah, the swearing's not necessary, thanks. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion, calling on council to allocate funding to upgrade the pedestrian islands and install a zebra crossing or signalised pedestrian crossing on the uncontrolled and unsafe slip lane at the corner of Noble Street and Annerley Road, Fairfield, to provide safer crossing points.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Sri. That standing rules be suspended to allow an urgency motion to be debated. Councillor Johnston, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. For many years now, well over a decade, this is one of the intersections of many in my ward that I've been trying to have upgraded. It is an uncontrolled and very dangerous slip lane on the corner of Annerley Road and Noble Street. It's a, a corner that connects to Dutton Park Rail Station and it now connects to multiple schools, including the new Brisbane South State Secondary College. Last night I received the following motion and I don't think I can, sorry, the following email and I don't think I can say it any better than this. And this is why it is so incredibly urgent. I've had two significant, and I'm, I'm going to read very quickly the short email from the resident who raised this last night with me. I've had two significant near misses while crossing the slip lane on the corner of Noble and Annerley Road. Once I had begun my crossing and having seen a van was approaching but a safe distance away, I didn't realise the van was speeding and only just scrambled off the road in time. Now, cars are supposed to give way to pedestrians on the road, but in this case, it's a busy main road and they don't. The second occurred last night. I was crossing from the traffic lights and I had seen my path was clear. Halfway across, and this is a person with low vision who finds this very challenging to start with. I was held, I was held up while completing my crossing. The person was held up while I took two seconds to finish crossing. They yelled out at me that it was not a crossing point and I, and I was in the wrong. So this is a driver abusing a pedestrian crossing the road. And my resident explained they had the right of way. I realised there are several signs to show blind people cross, but in my experience, drivers are becoming more brazen. While I do have a vision impairment, I go to great lengths to ensure my safety. Could I ask that something be done to improve the safety of this crossing? I believe that a crossing or a traffic light would greatly assist. I am a dual Paralympian who trains before and after my work as a teacher aide. I use the station at Dutton Park on a daily basis. This is why I come in this place week after week and move these urgency motions, substantive motions and budget requests. I know this is something that councillor Sri strongly supports. It's on our new common boundary. It is so critically important. I have a very large blind community 500 metres down the road where this person lives and they cannot safely walk around their neighbourhood. So it's only a couple of weeks ago you voted no to this. It's time to correct that because I don't want someone with low vision, a dual Paralympian, being knocked over in the street because you'd rather Krista Adams go, councillor Krista Adams goes to a junket in China than invest in a zebra crossing in Annerley. I urge all councillors to support the motion.
Thank you. We now put the motion for the suspension of standing rules. All those in favour, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston. Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells. All councillors present are now back in the chamber. The division is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
All the pla, all opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Any abstentions? The noes have it. We continue with question time. Councillor Adaman.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Can you update the chamber on some of the achievements in your portfolio throughout 2021 and how we are giving residents more to see and do in Brisbane?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Adaman for the question. It certainly has been an incredible 2021. And since becoming the Civic Cabinet Chair, I've had the pleasure of working closely with the passionate and dedicated officers of council's Lifestyle and Community Services Division, who work extremely hard, day in, day out, to deliver for the residents of Brisbane. Our officers pour their heart and soul into their work, and that has never been made clearer than in the year that has been, as they have gone above and beyond to keep our city moving forward during these ever-changing, unprecedented circumstances. And a great example of this is our very own contact centre. This year, we celebrated the 25th year of council's award-winning contact centre, which by the end of November had received over 1.2 million contacts. Not only is the contact centre valued by the community and businesses, but it's also been recognised by the national contact centre industry by winning the 2021 AusContact National Award for Customer Contact Centre. Our people are also winning awards, Mr. Chair, with Heather Beach being named our Queensland State Winner for Customer Contact Professional, and Narelle Bullock was not only the Queensland State Winner for Team Leader, but also went on to win the national title. Well done to both of you and all of the wonderful staff at the contact centre, including their leader Shane Hackett. Our libraries team have again risen to the challenge of this pandemic, delivering much-valued and loved services across the city despite snap lockdowns and the ever-changing restrictions. The pace at which they have mobilised to adapt to the challenges has been nothing short of incredible. Our network of libraries, including mobile and pop-up, welcomed more than 3.6 million visitors this past year. And we are still proud to lead Australia's largest local government library service right here in Brisbane with more than 460,000 library memberships. With help from the Shrima Council, our library facilities have continued to improve so that they remain modern, vibrant hubs across the city. The Carandale Library Extension Project delivered 460 square metres of new space for customers to read, learn, create and connect, including a flexible event space, lounge and study area, make a space and the very popular media conversion station. The Anala Library refurbishment is also well underway, and we will be very excited to unveil the new look library to the community in early 2022. So thank you to all the library staff for the incredible work that they do. We also have many officers in other branches of councils who do a lot of incredible work in the background to make Brisbane the beautiful city that it is, and that they go above and beyond to deliver extra support to our communities in their time of need. Therefore, Mr. Chair, I would like to make mention of our Creative Communities team, who some would say are the heart of what Programme Five is known for. It is safe to say that our festivals and events team have become an even more adept, agile and flexible team while navigating the ever-changing guidelines and industry plans in line with current Queensland health directives, and have done so all with a smile on their face. This financial year, the Shrima Council has delivered a record $4.87 million in the budget to support festivals, events, as well as creative and cultural organisations. Our team has helped to facilitate more than 150 suburban community and multicultural events, with events like Backyard Bonanza. And through you, Mr. Chair, I know that that's one of councillor Landers' favourites. It's a community, family-focused event, and it offers free kids' activities as well as performances showcasing local talents. Of course, Mr. Chair, I couldn't, could not not mention the Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties, which kicked off this week and which I had the pleasure of attending this morning. I know that these are always very welcome and that the seniors love the chance to get out, dress up and have a great time with their friends. Together, all these events have given residents so much to see and do in Brisbane, and the success of these events has helped foster Brisbane's community identity, to ensure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. Thank you to Simon Alexander and his wonderful team, who have really stepped it up this year and have provided funding support for the multiple signature city, suburban, multicultural and sponsored festivals and events right across Brisbane, to ensure that we continue to be a vibrant, cultural city, celebrating Brisbane's diverse cultural arts and creativity sector. I'd like to say a special thank you to our community facilities and connected communities branches for all the wonderful work that they have done this year, developing a virtual community hall tour to improve the customer experience. In closing, Mr. Chair, I want to acknowledge that a lot of great things have taken place in our programme.
Councillor Howard, sorry, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in my previous question, I explained how one of your LMP councillors charged ratepayers almost $2,000 for a personal development course at a company called Mines Tomorrow. Seeing how you claim that you don't know who that is or won't reveal, I will, that LMP councillor was councillor Peter Matic, who is not a chair of a Civic Cabinet Committee. This company he trained with offers courses in neuro-linguistic programming, or NLP, which according to research is a psychological approach that involves analysing strategies used by successful individuals and applying them to reach a personal goal. Lord Mayor, recently you set up a training fund for councillors to complete professional development courses that benefit ratepayers. A councillor doing a course in neuro-linguistic programming does not benefit ratepayers, Lord Mayor. Will you apologise on behalf of your fellow LMP councillor, Peter Matic, in order that he reimburse the people of Brisbane for this personal development course?
Lord Mayor.
No.
Further questions?
Chair.
Councillor MacKay.
Chair.
Councillor Cassidy, you're on your feet.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion.
Okay. You have three minutes to establish urgency, councillor Cassidy.
I've just sent the motion through, Chair, and I'll read it now. The councillor Peter Matic reimbursed ratepayers $1,925 for the course he completed at Mines Tomorrow, and that stricter guidelines are introduced to prevent the use of councillor training courses fund for personal development courses. Chair, this is urgent today because we have uncovered just how this fund is being used, and it does not pass the pub test with Brisbane residents. This is urgent because what we are talking about here is public money being used, and it should, this is well and truly in the public interest that we talk about this and debate this. We believe that residents' money should not be used for a councillor's personal development. They should pay for that out of their own pockets like everybody else is expected to. This is urgent, Chair, because Labor councillors don't believe a councillor doing a course in neuro-linguistic programming benefits this city or its residents. According to some, neuro-linguistic programming, or NLP, is a pseudo-scientific approach to communication, personal development and psychotherapy developed in the US in the 1970s. Other definitions include a psychological approach that involves analysing strategies used by successful individuals, applying them to reach a personal goal, or a method of personal development through promoting skills such as self-reflection, confidence and communication. It includes the word 'personal' in every one of those definitions, Chair. Some of the courses on offer at this company that councillor Matic went on to are described as ways to learn the art of win-win in life and uncover the deep energy and potential within you. It also states that NLP has been proven to help people achieve what they want in life. Now, councillor Matic needs to urgently write this wrought, Chair, and apologise to the residents of Brisbane for using their money for a personal development course and pay them back. This is urgent because personal development courses should be paid for personally by the councillor receiving that training, not the people of Brisbane. This LMP administration introduced this training fund earlier this year, which allocates councillors up to $10,000 for courses. This fund should be used only to fund accredited professional development courses that directly benefit the ratepayers of Brisbane, such as maybe a course in financial management. This fund should not be used for courses described as personal development. This is urgent, Chair, because this money should be spent to benefit our city, not individual LMP councillors. We've got over 1,000 broken footpaths and streets without footpaths at all. We have clubs with leaking roofs, others that are struggling to keep their lights on. But this LMP mayor and his LMP administration would rather spend residents' money on their own personal gain.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. All those in favour of this matter being urgent, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. All councillors are in the chamber. Yes, we'll do the count. All in favour of this matter being urgent, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
This is a division. It was obvious the, the outcome of the previous vote was that the noes have it. This is now the division. All in favour of this matter being urgent, please say aye and raise your hands. All those who believe it to be not urgent, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Any abstentions? All councillors are in the place. Don't ring the bells if everyone's here. Any, are you abstaining, councillor Sri? One abstention. Clap. Clap.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. The voting being six in favour, 19 against and one abstention.
Thank you. Continue with question time. Councillor MacKay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, can you update the chamber on some of the achievements in your portfolio throughout 2021 and how we are continuing to deliver a clean and green city?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, I thank councillor MacKay for the question. The Shrima Council is committed to making Brisbane a better place to live by providing more opportunities for recreation for Brisbane residents, which is why we are committed to expanding and improving on our parks network. Now, councillor Wines, I don't have a Christmas tree metaphor in my response. However, in the spirit of previous parks chairs, both yourself, Mr. Chair, and councillor Cunningham, I'm excited to share this year's A to Z of parks and park improvements being delivered in my portfolio. So let's start at the very beginning, because I hear that that's a very good place to start. A is for Archerfield Wetlands, which is being upgraded as part of our $100 million commitment to transforming the Oxley Creek Corridor into a new major recreation, educational and environmental parkland. B is for BMX pump tracks that we have been delivering across parks in the suburbs with a new BMX track proposed for Mercer Park at Kedron. C is for the Cooperoo Common with a new scooter track currently under construction, which will complement the existing fitness equipment, playground, skate facilities and half-court. D is for dog off-leash areas with council delivering 14 new dollars this financial year alone. E is for exercise equipment in our parks to encourage a more active and healthier lifestyle. F is for Forest Lake with Centennial Way Park being upgraded with new picnic facilities, including picnic tables, barbecue, bins and bubblers. G is continuing upgrades to Grinstead Park with works including new playground equipment, new pathways and additional picnic facilities. H is for design works for a future district sports park at Honeyeater Park in Upper Kedron. I is for Indrapilly, delivering an upgrade to the Sir John Chandler Park with new turfing and fencing around the existing playground. J is for Jaralba Park Capera, which is going to benefit from some additional shade in the park. K is for Kitchenah Park Winham, where residents have been consulted on the draft concept plan that proposes a new playground, Aqua Park and Flying Fox. L is for a new full-size basketball court that was delivered at Les Atkinson Park Sunnybank, which is in addition to the already existing half-court. M is for Murray Recreation Reserve, which will soon become Brisbane's first cycle park. We recently released the concept plan for future upgrades that will see an international-level criterium track delivered at the reserve. N is for our ninja courses that are popular with the young and the young at heart. We are building courses at Illawina Park, Callumvale, Whites Hill Reserve in Camp Hill, and in my very own Taralba Park at Everton Park. O is for open space, with the Shrima Council continuing to expand on our open space network, delivering nine new parks in the last financial year. P is for the Paul Conti Park Hemmett, that is going to be home to a new scooter track based on the award-winning scooter track that was delivered at Bradbury Park. Q is for winning the Queensland Landscape and Architecture Awards, with Worrell Parklands, Bradbury Park and Carl Street Common all receiving awards. R is for Rochedale, with a new local park being delivered in Blackwood Street. R is also for Roma Street Parklands, which has won the Green Flag Award for the third year in a row, which recognises and rewards well-managed parks as setting the standard for management of recreational outdoor spaces across the world. Congratulations to Brisbane's own City Parkland Services. S is for a new skateboard we will be delivering at Shaftesbury Street Park, Taragindi. T is for Thrust Street Park in Anala, which will be home to one of our signature playgrounds and will include musical and water play elements. U is for urban commons, showcasing what we will deliver in parks of every size, from our recreation reserves to urban commons. V is for Vera Canali Park, formerly known as Chalk Street Park, which is a brand-new park that opened in September in Marchant Ward. That is home to a playground, fitness equipment, bike repair station, picnic shelters and open space for sport and activities. W is for West End, with stage-two improvement works being undertaken at Davies Park, which will provide links to the multi-games area delivered last year. X is for xylophones, which are delivered in our playgrounds, like at Balimba Memorial Park and Jubilee Park in Badon, and provide play options for our littlest playground visitors. Y is for Yorongam Memorial Park, which will receive upgraded fitness stations. And Z is for the upgrades in Zilmere with new pathway lighting installed at Len Trezona Park at Zilmere. Mr. Chair, now we know our ABCs for parks in Brisbane and how we are delivering a clean and green city.
Thank you.
Where you live north, south, east or west, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 29th of November 2021, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 29th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday the 29th of November 2021 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I move that all items are taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes.
All items seriatum for debate and voting. Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday and Thursday, i.e. tomorrow and Thursday, we will be lighting up our city assets to celebrate the first test match of, what is it, councillor Adams? The Ashes, which are being held here in Brisbane, played at the Gabba. And obviously that's a, it's a, it's a tradition that goes back a long way. It's something that a great deal of Brisbane residents get very excited about, including maybe some in this room. It's a chance for cricket fans to witness this much-anticipated rivalry firsthand, in person, at the Gabba. So we're lighting up the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridges, Story Bridge, Radcliffe Place sculptures and the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha in, what colours? Green and gold. Green and gold, that's right. Good guess. So best of luck to Australia. Friday marks International Human Rights Day, and this is the International Observance on the anniversary of the United Nations adopting the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on the 10th of December 1948, which outlines the protection and promotion of human rights across the globe. Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place sculptures and Tropical Dome will be lit blue on Friday in support. Item A is the report of the Audit Committee, and I'll leave this report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate on item A. Item A, councillor Johnston.
Yes. Thank you, right to speak on item A. And I have to thank the Lord Mayor for his suggestion last week that we exercise our right to speak on every- And I have to thank the Lord Mayor for his suggestion last week that we exercise our right to speak on every item. I would have probably preferred a different approach, but as I'm not extended the courtesy of an extension, I'll have to speak on every item. So, item A, the Audit Committee report. The Audit Committee report actually has some very concerning information in it this time. Firstly, there are two new members of the Audit Committee who've been appointed, presumably by the E and C Committee. So they've been appointed in secret, there was no discussion, it wasn't brought here, it wasn't publicised. So the independent members who oversight the Audit Committee of Brisbane City Council have changed. One's retired and two have been appointed. And I really think that's something that should be on the record, the public record of council, instead of just snuck through in these minutes that they are required to bring as a matter of statutory responsibility. The minutes also note that Kate Davies, the manager of City Administration and Governance, resigned from council effective from 1 November 2021. Now, we still don't know why somebody we work with suddenly disappeared. She was talking to us one day and then not another. I suspect something is very wrong there, but there's been no explanation from the CEO about why Kate Davies left the organisation after not even a year, I don't think. So I find that quite concerning. There's some new language in the way in which these minutes are being prepared. And we're seeing the Audit Committee asking questions about council business independently of items that are being brought forward. Now, that is always a concern. And it appears that officers are answering, and the following language is being used, that there was a satisfactorily provided update. Now, that doesn't really tell you too much about what it is that was concerning the committee members, nor how the issues were resolved. The report goes on to note that the Queensland Local Government Sustainability Framework Discussion Paper has been prepared by council. I'd certainly like to know what that is. Obviously, it's some sort of document that relates to how Brisbane City governs its finances. Again, it's not been brought to this council for any kind of debate or consideration. I presume we put in a submission, it's a state government document that we have to meet. How it impacts on our finances, though, is unclear. The committee is also very concerned, it seems, by the financial sustainability ratios and assets under management and is going to monitor these throughout the year through the Audit Committee's Finance Subcommittee. Now, these, of course, are the financial ratios that council publishes and exceeds in almost every way. So, for example, net liabilities are supposed to be no greater than 60%. Council's about 212 or 220%, I think, based on the last annual report. So clearly, this Audit Committee is concerned about council meeting its targeted financial benchmarks and its failure to do so. And it's interesting that they're going to monitor that this year. There are a number of other things of concern. A payroll review was supposed to be conducted in the last financial year, 2021, 22. That was not undertaken. And it's now been pushed out, not to this year, but to next year, to 2022, 2023. Perhaps if that financial audit of the payroll system had been undertaken, some discrepancies in how much we pay our ward staff would have been noted. And these superannuation discrepancies that the LMP administration has allowed to develop may have been identified and addressed sooner. But I'm not sure why we need to push off a review of payroll services for two years when it was determined to be done last year. It's something, obviously, the committee is concerned about as well. There are some concerns in here about high-risk rating audit findings. And the committee clearly has some concerns about procurement and contract management issues in fleet solutions and in contract safety management. I'd like to know what the high-risk audit findings were. I'd like to know how council is addressing the high-risk audit findings that have occurred in these two areas of council. Again, we get no information in the report. The council officer responsible updated the Audit Committee on progress against issues relevant to the audit findings. What are they? It's not all that often we get high-risk audit findings, so I'd certainly like to know what they are. It seems to be some sort of indication that there might be a problem. And finally, and I'm not sure I've seen this before either, the Audit Committee members met out of session in November with the divisional manager of Brisbane Transport, Geoff Beck. And I'd certainly like to know what that was all about. It's that important that it's not being done in the regular monthly meetings, that they had to have it?
Exploding ferries.
Exploding ferries, oh, good. So that's not listed in here, but it'd be really useful to know when unusual incidences of financial concern happen in this council. You know, the basics like, what were they and how were they addressed? I mean, that's the point of an audit. If you read this document, you would be concerned because it highlights problems, but it lacks transparency. It fails to provide any information about what those problems are and how they're actually being addressed. And I'm sorry, it's not good enough to just say, there, there, an answer was satisfactorily provided. To whom? To the committee members who are clearly having external meetings to try and resolve some of these issues or the high-risk audit findings that there's no discussion about in council. So I think this audit report is quite damning of council. I have concerns about the lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, particularly when it comes to the appointment of new members and the failure of the Lord Mayor and the LMP to bring committee members through to council. So there is public awareness of who is monitoring council's finances. Yet again, this administration is letting the residents of Brisbane down and has, you know, failed to take public responsibility for the management of council's finances in a transparent way.
Thanks, Mister Chair. This is the rise to speak on item A. So this is the standard report of council's independent audit committee meeting held on the 11th of November, which is presented to the full council chamber in accordance with the City of Brisbane Regulation. The Audit Committee reviews council's own internal audit reports on operational risks and control measures. Council is a complex organisation and the independent audit committee help ensure that we are doing everything we can to reduce our exposure to risk. Can I take this opportunity at the end of the year to thank the Audit Committee for the work that they are doing for our city? Throughout the year, council works with the committee and the Queensland Audit Office as well to ensure that we meet all our audit requirements. As usual, this meeting, the committee heard from the CEO, the CFO, the chief internal auditor and the QAO. Their order of council's financial statements was also discussed. Look, in relation to councillor Johnston's comments, all I would say, Mister Chair, is that when it comes to transparency, I am more than happy to answer any questions from the opposition or from the non-administration councillors about questions they might have on the Audit Committee. You're welcome to email me. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, yeah, not now.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair, right to speak on clause A. And I'm glad councillor Cunningham confirmed that this lack of transparency is the norm and the standard for this administration in bringing these audit committees. Because time after time, month after month, the report we get from the Audit Committee as councillors, as the elected representatives of the people of Brisbane in noting these reports is that there is no information. There are more questions about these reports than there are answers about them. This administration likes transparency like the plague. We can see that the committee did discuss issues and councillor Johnson did go through them. And perhaps you're optimistic, councillor Johnson, through you, Chair, in putting those questions to the relevant chair or Lord Mayor here and seeking some information. I've certainly lost all hope of getting that in this public place. But we have, as non-administration councillors, have no idea about what those issues are and why there were presentations made to the Audit Committee and what was discussed at that and what decisions were made to rectify these secret problems that we know exist, but we don't know the details of them and we don't know the ramifications of them. And we don't know what is being done to sort out these problems. And the list of those issues that the Audit Committee is forced to look into is growing by the month. So there is a direct correlation, Chair, between secrecy going up under this administration and transparency going down. And it is quite clear that is never going to change while Lord Mayor Adrian Shunner is in charge.
Thank you. Further speakers? No further speakers? We'll now move to the vote on item A. All in favour of item A in the E and C report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. This division is for the vote on item A in the E and C report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No abstentions. Clarks?
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and seven against.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Lord Mayor, item B, B in the E and C report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Item B relates to the lease of council land to community organisations. And in accordance with section 217 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, council is required to invite written tenders before entering into a contract such as a lease of land. Council has 40 existing leases over part of council-owned land or controlled land to progress in accordance with council's standard lease terms and conditions. Council is the owner of land where it is designated freehold for a number of organisations, where a lease that has expired or is due to expire prior to the 30th of June 2022 or where they require a new lease. There are also five community organisations that have requested council consent for additional land, which is adjacent to their current lease premises. Council is supportive of each of the tenant's proposals in principle, subject to obtaining a lease over the additional land. So by supporting item B today, council officers will be able to progress with lease negotiations for these organisations, allowing each of the current lessies to continue operating at their current premises and deliver important community cultural, sport and recreation activities and facilities for the residents of Brisbane to enjoy.
Thanks, Chair, right to speak on item B, the lease process of council land to community organisations. And we will be supporting this item today. This clause includes 43 community leases for a number of council properties right around the city of Brisbane. One of those stands out, and that's Backbone Youth Arts. And this is a result of their forced eviction and relocation to Seven Hills, Chair. Backbone used to call the East Brisbane Bowls Club their home, where they had been hosting shows for many years. The East Brisbane Bowls Club was a perfect facility for them and the creative opportunities they provided young Brisbane artists and performers. And now, because this LMP Lord Mayor and their local LMP councillor, councillor Cunningham, have decided to bulldoze that bowl permanently against the community's wishes, Chair, Backbone is being forced to relocate to a much less suitable facility for them. This is an appalling treatment of a community organisation. It's an appalling treatment of a valued community facility, and it's an appalling treatment of residents. That community did not want the Bowls Club building to be permanently demolished. They wanted it upgraded. And it was wonderful to see so many of those community members out in King George Square earlier today. And these are the same people that this Lord Mayor called all sorts of names and called them?
Fake.
Called them fake, that's right. That was the worst of them all. But this LMP mayor, Chair, and his LMP administration here rigged the results of that community consultation and completely misrepresented them. They tried to keep that draft plan, which actually represented the community's wants, a secret until Labour councillors, until councillor Cook tabled it in this chamber. And no matter how many times Labour councillors and residents tell this LMP mayor what they want for this site, he bites back even harder. He's drunk on power, Chair, and blinded by arrogance. And the result we see today in one of these items before us is the forced eviction and relocation and downgrading, downgrading of a community facility for Backbone Community Arts.
Thank you. Further speakers on B? Any further speakers on B? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item B, the council leasing to community organisations. And I guess I would like to start with a question to the Lord Mayor, but as he usually doesn't answer any of my questions, I don't hold out much hope. But it's just a few weeks ago, we had a very big debate in this place about a tenure structure for a veterans' organisation in the southern suburbs of Brisbane. And the reason that we had to sell the land, sell this parkland was we could not exercise leases over trust land. So that was the reason that was given to this chamber just a few weeks ago. Now, in the leases before us here today, there are a number of community leases that are being given over trust land, including the Acacia Ridge Community Support Organisation, that's trust land. The Centenary Archers Club, that's trust land. Yorongha Guides in Yorongha Memorial Park, that's trust land. The Oxley Creek Catchment Association in Durack, that's trust land, partially. The Boys Brigade in Holland Park West End, trust land. The Gap Pastime Association, that's partly trust land. And we have the Waterloo Bay Leisure Centre in Winham, trust land. Turnbull Croquet Club, trust land. The West Side Sports Club at Capera, trust land. And the Wounded Heroes Association at Wakehold, trust land. So I guess my question to the Lord Mayor is, why is it that these organisations can get a council lease over parkland that is held in trust, but the veterans' organisation that had to be sold parkland because, and the reason given was, we couldn't exercise a lease over trust land? I would like the Lord Mayor, or perhaps the Parks Chair or community leasing, whoever's in charge now, to stand up and tell us why it's possible in these sort of 10 or 12 cases, but it wasn't possible in the southern suburbs of Brisbane just a few weeks ago. cases, but it wasn't possible in the southern suburbs of Brisbane just a few weeks ago. So that's my first question to the Lord Mayor, and if the Lord Mayor does not answer, he can be assured that I will be following up on this, because it did sound odd to me a few weeks ago. And as everybody in this chamber knows, I did rise and speak with some very significant concerns about how that arrangement had been determined. And I did listen genuinely to the feedback that was given, and I made a decision to support that, but we were told that that was the only solution, that you could not lease out trust land. Now, I know that is not the case, because we do it all the time. So I'd like the Lord Mayor to clarify why these leases over trust land are acceptable, but the lease for the Veterans' Association a few weeks ago was not possible on trust parkland. I also want to talk about some of the delays that's going on. This process that council is running, where it delays community leases and brings them up in big batches like this, is not serving our volunteer community groups well. Many of these leases will be actually out of lease, and this concerns volunteer organisations who take their governance responsibilities seriously. And it is very distressing to them when there is no lease and their lease runs out. This has only become a process in the last few years that council has done it this way, and there is absolutely no reason why we can't be bringing up leases in small batches on a regular basis through this council chamber. Instead, today, on one of the busiest days of the year for council business, we're bringing through community leases that don't need to be done today. So I think this council needs to find a more efficient and timely way of bringing up leases for approval by council. That is important, after the stuff up a few years ago where council had not been getting the appropriate statutory approval. So this is a big concern to me, and this is what the officers tell us, oh, we have to wait, councillor, they've got to be grouped together. No, they don't. There is absolutely no reason why leases have to be delayed. And if they were coming through this place every week or every second week, they would zip through here in just a couple of minutes, instead of what this LMP administration is now doing, which is causing distress to our community groups. Finally, I note that the Carrington Boat Club has still not had their lease approved. This is outrageous behaviour by the LMP to hurt a small community boating club in Corinda. They are well out of lease, there is absolutely no justification for council's appalling behaviour towards this club. And it may be another six months before we see more community leases come through. They're trying to finalise DAs, they've got issues, and this council is disrespecting them by not bringing their lease forward. They're about a year out of lease, is my understanding. This council needs to act in a more timely way to support our community groups. These leases need to be brought up to this chamber on a regular basis for approval, and the Lord Mayor needs to explain publicly why the Carrington Boat Club is being disrespected by this organisation when its lease should be finalised and should have been in this group here before us today. But I look forward to his explanation about why these community leases on trust land are okay, but the Veterans' Association could not lease parkland held in trust by council in the southern suburbs. Thank you.
Further speakers on B? Councillors three.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the community leases item, and particularly wanted to comment on the Backbone lease. I would be interested to understand a bit more detail, perhaps from councillor Howard, about how it is that some leases can be given to community groups without going out to tender and other organisations having an opportunity to put in expressions of interest, while, yeah, other lease facilities do have to follow that more complex process. It does seem to me that if council had put out an open tender for the Seven Hills Theatre Facility, the administration may well have received a lot of interest from multiple groups, and the council's decision not to do that perhaps masks just how much demand for community facilities there is across the city, and particularly in the south and the inner east. Yeah, I'm feeling a little bit sad that the tone of debate around the East Brisbane Bowls Club has obscured the fact that there is a local community very much geographically centred around East Brisbane, in addition to another community of artists and musicians across the inner south side, who rely quite heavily on that East Brisbane Bowls Club venue, independently of the work that Backbone Youth Arts, the great work that Backbone Youth Arts has done in that space. And if councillors like councillor Howard or the Lord Mayor are having trouble getting their heads around this, it's not so dissimilar to many other community facilities, where you will have one community group or one organisation that's predominantly managing and running the space, but is then collaborating with or leasing out the space to many other community groups and activities. And through you, Chair, councillor Howard and to councillor Cunningham, I hope there's a recognition that even though Backbone itself might be relocating to Seven Hills, that doesn't mean that all those other community groups will also be able to use that much smaller and more limited facility at Seven Hills. The various kinds of live music events, artistic performances, theatre performances, workshops, community meetings, et cetera, that have happened at the East Brisbane Bowls Club will not all be able to easily relocate to the Seven Hills venue, which is a very different kind of space and a very different kind of suburban location. And I would encourage councillor Cunningham to at least stand up in the chamber and explain why it is that she's ignored the interests of that East Brisbane community, who very much do want to see that Bowls Club facility preserved, or indeed a new and better performing arts venue delivered in that space. I did also want to say, though, through you, Chair, to the Lord Mayor, and this is a sincere and genuine offer, that if the council does make the right decision and decides on the basis of the second round of consultation to preserve that East Brisbane Bowls Club facility, I will give credit where it's due. I will not try and take credit for this being like some Greens victory over the LMP, or look, we got one over them, or anything like that. Lord Mayor, I genuinely want to see that facility preserved, and this isn't about party politics, this isn't about point scoring, this is about what's best for a community that, you know, it's not even in my electorate, to be blunt, but we really do need to see that facility preserved, and I assume that will come through in the subsequent rounds of public consultation. But I hope that the LMP administration recognises that it's not too late to, it seems like a decision hasn't formally been made yet. It seems like there is still an open conversation about exactly what will happen with the Bowls Club building, but it's not too late to listen to the community and to do the right thing and preserve that community facility in the suburb of East Brisbane, in Mowbray Park. We know, we've looked at the data, it's very clear that there's a shortage of community facilities in the 4169 postcode for considering the population growth and considering the needs of the existing residential communities. There are so many people living in apartments and spaces where they don't have a lot of private entertainment space, who are particularly reliant upon these public facilities and community facilities as places to meet and gather for recreation, for socialising, and particularly for the arts and celebration. And we also know that Brisbane's live music ecosystem has come through a really tough time with Covid, and that the provision of affordable spaces for performing arts and music is really important at this time in particular. As inner-city land values rise, as the per-square metre cost of commercial floor space rise, it is becoming less and less commercially profitable and viable for bars and other private businesses to make spaces for local musicians and performing artists to share their work and to develop their craft. And this is something that councillor Howard in particular really needs to acknowledge and recognise, is that while we are still seeing a few great new steps forward with venues like the Princess Theatre reopening as live music venues and the Triffords.
Councillor three, can I bring you back to the item before us, please?
Sure, I'm talking about community facilities.
Yes, but not the item before us. I know you're talking about community facilities, but that's not the item before us.
That's fair enough. And I'm speaking particularly about the Backbone lease here and what this means for the community. And what we are seeing is that community groups, and particularly musicians who are perhaps at the earlier stages of their careers, are having a very difficult time finding spaces to perform and rehearse when that's left up to the private sector, because the average bar simply can't make room for a band when they're paying really high rents, and they have to fill every square metre with tables for drinking and for food consumption. So in that context, the preservation of facilities like the East Brisbane Bowls Club becomes particularly important. And I worry that the council administration is going to say, well, look, we've given Backbone this new lease, we've supported them to relocate to Seven Hills, job done, box ticked, we don't have to worry anymore. And I want to say on the record very clearly that that is not the correct conclusion. There is still a demonstrable, very strong, clear need for live music venues, for performing arts venues in the inner south side that are owned by council and leased out at low cost to community groups. There's any number of community organisations that would love to take on the lease of the East Brisbane Bowls Club. And there's a real opportunity here for council to work constructively with Brisbane's artistic communities. Councillor Howard has genuinely tried to build relationships with many of these groups, and they're certainly not all Greens voters by any stretch of the imagination. There's lots of people in these communities who, yeah, they don't necessarily consider themselves lefties or anything, they just want places to perform, they just want places to create. And it would be a great shame if Brisbane City Council robbed those communities of these spaces where they can come together, where they can make music and art, and build a sense of community, which is something we so badly need in this city. So I do, like, just one more time, really want to reiterate to the Lord Mayor that there's an opportunity here to do the right thing for the city and the right thing for this community. And councillor Cunningham, you will get a lot of kudos from a lot of people if you listen to what the community is calling for and make the call to preserve that Bowls Club. At the very least, run more consultation if you have to, put out another call for expressions of interest or alternative proposals to see if there are other, to test the market and see if there are other ways that that site could be activated. But don't rush into knocking it down just because the Backbone community group has found another site. Don't be hasty in spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on council resources, knocking down a building that is perfectly structurally sound, when there is so much demand from community groups to use that facility. As I keep saying, we have an opportunity here to deliver a positive legacy for the inner south side and to build upon the great work that Backbone has done in reactivating and energising that space and in turn reactivating the broader parkland and that precinct of East Brisbane. But it would be a woeful shame if council simply said, now that Backbone's gone, the Bowls Club has no future and we're going to demolish it. I think that would be a great mistake for the city, and I really do implore the Lord Mayor to reflect over the Christmas break and to think deeply about what is in the best long-term interest of the city, because that building is important to a lot of people and can continue to play an important role in the cultural life of this city if the administration works with Brisbane's artistic and creative communities and thinks creatively about how we can preserve that site for future generations.
Councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Second.
Motion is for an afternoon tea adjournment, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Got to keep remembering to do that. We're in Item B of the E and C report. Is there any further speakers on Item B in the E and C report? Councillor Howard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to enter the debate on Item B and to actually speak to the items in the debate, not things that aren't in the report. The very first thing that I would like to say is that by supporting the application for the exceptions that we've been discussing, this will enable council officers to progress with lease negotiations, allowing each of the forty-three leases to continue operating at the current premises and delivering important community cultural and sport and recreation activities for the residents of Brisbane to enjoy. Council has chosen not to renew the lease by completing an auction or tender process, as this may have the potential to displace or disrupt long-serving community organisations. It is for this reason that council is requested to support entering into new lease agreements with each organisation on terms acceptable to the manager of the asset management, Brisbane Infrastructure, and the chief legal counsel, city legal, city administration and governance. And the approval of each of the specific leases and conditions will be as per the existing delegations in council's register of delegations. So that's a long way of saying that the reason that this is before council is to allow our officers to continue to talk to the groups. It's about allowing these organisations to continue where they have been for, in some cases, for quite a long time, but also to make sure that the officers have the time to be able to talk to them about those leases. So there are five community organisations that have requested council consent to additional land which is adjacent to their current lease premises to allow for expansion of their activities and to meet growing community need. Council is supportive of each of the tenants' proposals in principle, subject to obtaining a lease over the additional land, and each of these locations, organisations and current lease expiry dates are as follows. So Kalinga Park, which is the home of the Brisbane North Junior Cricket Association, the lease expires in 2023, and the lease over the cricket field at Nash Over, which is adjacent to the existing clubhouse building lease. At Whites Hill Reserve, there's a lease expiring in 2027, and this is to formalise an improved area of green space currently used for warm-up and training that is adjacent to the current lease area. Yandina Picnic Ground Park at Mansfield, the lease is expiring in 2025, and they're seeking to construct storage sheds to support soccer and cricket, and the storage shed will be located adjacent to the existing lease area. Grove Lee Sports Ground Park, the lease expires in 2023, and this is for the installation of new water tanks, again, adjacent to the existing area. And of course, CJ Greenfield Complex Park at Richlands, the extension of the lease is to support construction of a formalised footpath and lighting. So a lot of these tenants, the purpose for this is for us to allow the officers to continue those negotiations so that we can get a good outcome. Moving to the proposed tenant of 28 Tellerwood Street, Seven Hills, Backbone Youth Arts, this is a proposed new lease for Backbone to base their operations at the Seven Hills hub and activate the premises as a youth arts hub. The purpose of including this tenant as part of the submission to apply the exception is to allow our connected communities' officers to formalise lease discussions. And Mister Chair, Backbone Youth Arts has agreed to progress plans to move to a new home at the Jolly Centre at Seven Hills Hub, located, as I said, at 28 Tellerwood Street, Seven Hills. Backbone plans to manage a number of creative spaces within the hub and will provide opportunities to activate the space with and for the local community. The site at Seven Hills offers creative spaces that would simply not be accessible to their organisation elsewhere and represents an excellent opportunity for this organisation to continue to grow and deliver their programming for members of the community. It's a shame that we've heard some words from the other side of the chamber, which really does not recognise the hours and hours of hard work and benefits associated with Backbone's relocation to a new site, that will see them develop to their full potential. And through you, Mister Chair, if I can say to councillors in this chamber, if you have any groups that are wanting to utilise sites, they should be talking to people like Backbone so that Backbone can grow and have people helping them with their lease areas. And so on that note, Mister Chair, I would just like to commend Item B to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate on Item B? No further debate on Item B. Deputy Mayor, I don't think you have a right reply. So we now move to the vote on Item B. So we now move to the vote on item B. All in favour of B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we now move to item C. Item C, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I better enter the meeting, hey? Thank you very much. So item C before us is a 25-year lease with Kubera Kindergarten and Pre-Prep Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Corporation. This is a non-for-profit corporation registered under the Corporations Act 2006, and it does play an integral role in children's learning and development. They had previously been granted a 25-year lease over the land for the period of 24th of July 96 to the 23rd of July 2021, for the conduct of a kindergarten, daycare centre, welfare services and a cultural and community facility. This group was established in 1974 by local Aboriginal mothers who wanted their children to have an early learning experience that reflected their diverse identities and cultures. It also provides a playgroup, a community programme, family support and is sponsors to the North Side NADOC event, which brings community gathers together to celebrate the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander culture. Understandably, Kubera has, over the past 47 years, become a pillar of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community on the north side of Brisbane. And they have requested, based on this, a long-term lease to enable them to release its vision for this site, to develop a multipurpose community, cultural hall and a purpose-built early learning centre. This long-term tenure that we have here today before us, 25 years, which is only for usually very special circumstances, and I think you'll all agree that this is one of them, is to give Kubera a certainty, oh, Kubara, sorry, certainty in being able to continue delivering their culturally responsive programmes and events to assist the organisation to attract the necessary funding to realise their wonderful vision for this site. I leave the debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, pardon me, thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause C and have spoken extensively about Kubara Kindy and their request for a long lease previously, so I'll just make a few short remarks. This is a really big win for Kubara Kindy. 25 years ago, Labor Lord Mayor Jim Sawley signed off on that 25-year lease for this amazing educational organisation. And over the past quarter of a century, Kubara has provided invaluable early education and support for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander kids across the north side. Kubara has touched the lives of countless families in our community. And as that 25-year lease was coming to an end, I worked alongside the team at Kubara to ensure that this current administration commits to a 25-year lease. And here we are today with that lease in front of us, which is great news. We want to make sure that Kubara's future is as bright as its past has been and that local Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children continue getting the very, very best start in life. This new lease will do just that, making sure the outstanding work that Kubara Kindy does at their home on Beams Road, Tagam, will continue now for generations to come. As I said, it's a win for Kubara, it's a win for our community, most importantly, a win for the thousands of children that will walk through the Kindy doors over the years to come.
Thank you. Further speakers on C? councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item C, the lease for Kubara Kindy. I rise to support this item and I note my concerns in the last item are reflected in this matter before us today as well, because the lease for Kubara is six months out of date and they've had to wait, obviously, some period of time to get this renewal underway. So again, I just stress that making sure, you know, 25 years notice, you think you could renew the lease sort of within that timeframe. So I just renew my request to council to make sure that they undertake lease renewals in a timely way that does not distress or concern the volunteer committees that run these organisations. They do feel the pressure of having no secure title and, you know, groups in my area talk to me quite regularly about their concerns with this. I just have one question that I'm hoping somebody who knows this Kindy can tell me about. I noted that the hours of operation until midnight, I'm really curious, what's going on at the Kindy until midnight on some nights? Obviously, there are, you know, cultural events perhaps that are happening there, but I did think, I did think when I was reading the documentation that it was quite unusual that a Kindy had 10pm weeknights and midnight weekends. So if anybody knows, I'm very curious as to why the extended hours for the Kindy.
Thank you. Further speakers on item C? councillor Sri.
I'll have a crack at answering councillor Johnston's question, just in case no one else does. Yeah, I think it's because they also function a bit like a community hall and a bookable event space, so outside Kindy hours, there's lots of other community activities going on there. But yeah, happy to support this item.
Thank you. Any further speakers on C? Deputy Mayor? Thank you. We now move to the vote on item C. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, item D, the amendment of the lease to Brisbane Racing Club Limited. Item D, Lord Mayor. Mic on.
Thank you, Mister Chair. In 2018, council approved a new lease to the Brisbane Racing Club Limited over part of Mortimer Road Park in Acacia Ridge. The lease boundary was resurveyed in 2019 to increase the lease area by 1,432 square metres pending the outcome of a council master planning exercise for the Mortimer Road Park. Mortimer Road Park Sport and Recreation Precinct Plan was finalised in February this year. The lease boundary was not resolved in a time to enable the Brisbane Racing Club to submit a reconfiguration of lot application. So support of item D today would allow an extension of time for the Brisbane Racing Club to obtain an approval for the reconfiguration of lot as per the previous expectation. So that's the subject of the item in front of us today.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers on item D? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. I just rise to make some notes about this particular item. This actually came to the chamber in March 2018 and was approved then by the chamber. And at the time, there were lots of benefits sung, including by myself, in relation to this particular lease and what it offered the local community, as well as the club down there. We're going to see money going into the clubhouse, we're going to see more money going into the local sporting groups and the users, and we're going to see this money help fund a car park as well as the Mortimer Road Master Plan. Now, three and a half years later, this item is returning to the chamber to have some amendments done to it. So it's been a fairly, well, it's been a very drawn-out process and a disappointing process. And over that time, I've had the Brisbane Racing Club come and meet with me several times, I've had numerous meetings with South Acacia Sporting Club as well, as well as with other clubs on the site that are concerned about how they're being treated and by some of the, some of the dynamics between the different clubs on the site. So I have, I have been disappointed with how this has progressed. I have been really disappointed with what has been achieved to date, which has been very little. And I think that in particular, I went out and really worked hard with council and with the administration, not necessarily the LMP administration, but council itself, with regards to master plan to ensure we had proper consultation, ensure people's views were considered. Because this offered an opportunity to develop a large sport and rec area in the south-west suburbs in my area, in part of the poorest part of my area. So least amount of funding for kids, least amount of funding for kids to even buy uniforms or to participate. So I actually thought this was a great idea to get this master plan done. The master plan got done, it was supported by the community. Unfortunately, and I've written to the Lord Mayor about this, there was no money allocated to implement the master plan. And my understanding from council officers, when they provided with costings of implementing this master plan, it was seven and a half million dollars. So what I see time and time again is these master plans being done where nothing is delivered. And when the master plan was done, I said to council officers, okay, well, great, we're going to go to the planning stage next year. Oh, no, council, that's not happening. And then I said, well, what about, what we're here to do? We need to put this, to get the car park done for all the thousands of people who use this site, we need to put the road through to provide the loop. No, council, there's no money for that. How do we fund it? Well, you can fund it through your Lord Mayor Suburban Initiative Fund, councillor. And I said, but in other wards, it's funded by the Lord Mayor directly.
Capital.
He actually funds it as capital. And they go, yes, we know, we know. And he goes, but that's, you're talking about blue areas, not red areas. And the council officers aren't scared to say that. The council officers are not scared to say that. And it's not, there are blue koalas or red koalas. There's different areas of the city are treated differently depending on the voting of that particular area. And this, this is a prime example of that. And the biggest irony is, the people from Brisbane Racing Club come to me and go, why aren't we getting funded for this precinct? Why isn't this master plan happening? I said, we're in a red area. But we get that, we all live in the inner city. We get this and we get this and we get this and we know the Lord Mayor and he gives us this. And it's like, wow! I said, well, have you had a chat to, had the mayor? Have you had a chat to councillor Howard? Oh, we shouldn't have to, you shouldn't be playing politics with this. I'm not playing politics, I'm trying to look after my community. I'm trying to ensure these people who pay rates and who deserve, and here we are, the Olympic city, $20,000 being spent on councillor Adams flying off to play Olympic friends, can't deliver basic community facilities and basic resources for people and for poor kids in the suburbs. This council absolutely fails. You fail. You're good at delivering them for wealthier kids, you are pathetic at delivering them for poorer communities and poorer kids. And this is the prime example in my ward. And you were the ones who wanted to go out there and do the master plan. And you were the ones out there saying, yeah, do the consultation, you know, we want a good outcome for those kids. Well, I did that and I supported them and I worked with the local community and the indigenous groups and the refugee group and the community group and the disabled group. I worked with all of them to get their views heard and included in this, but there's been no funding for this group to do this work. So I see this as a bit of a, you know, yep, great, good, we're coming back, we're going to sign it again. Apparently, and I don't know what deal we've done, it doesn't explain it in relation to pokey income that Brisbane Racing Club are getting. Because when they got this site, they got a whole lot of pokies. It doesn't actually explain, are we getting more income because of the pokies or are we getting less income because of the pokies? So is Brisbane Racing Club actually contributing less to the local community or are they going to be contributing more? I'd like the Lord Mayor to answer that, surely he would know that. And that would then surprise me because Brisbane Racing Club are always telling me what a great, they're having their inner-city site developed, oh, we're making so much money. And you think, well, if you're making so much money for a not-for-profit, then put it back into this little organisation, put it back into this facility here. So I've been really disappointed with this outcome. I'm concerned about what it means for our local communities. I'm really concerned that, once again, we're seeing poor, disadvantaged kids, whether they're Aboriginal, non-Arbo, we're disabled, we're not disabled, whether they're from a refugee background, missing out because they're in an area that the LMP don't have the councillor position. So I won't be supporting this, I'll be abstaining on this. I just think the effort that we've done here is pretty poor. And I will keep speaking loudly to Brisbane Racing Club and they certainly know my opinion. I know they've run back to councillor Howard and seen councillor Howard, we need to do so much more, we need to deliver this, we need to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Sri.
Thanks, I rise to speak on item D. Look, I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs of this arrangement out at Acacia Ridge, but what I do know is that the Brisbane Racing Club as an organisation is a sadistic parasite. It's a...
Oh, point of order, it's in a debate.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Absolutely disgraceful and I ask that that is withdrawn immediately.
Councillor Sri, you can't use language like that to describe an organisation. Please, can you withdraw that?
I'm sorry, Chair, am I not allowed to express my view in this chamber?
I don't think you can use that sort of language in here, councillor Sri.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not reflecting on any individuals and I want to be clear that I'm, I'm not referring to any particular individuals, but I do think that the racing industry is sadistic and parasitic, that it profits off the suffering and abuse of animals.
Councillor Sri, you're out of order because your opinions have nothing to do with this item before us, which is the extension of a lease for a club at Acacia Ridge.
Chair, I appreciate your guidance, but what we're voting on here is whether or not a lease, we're voting on whether or not council should be amending terms of a lease with an organisation in a way that's favourable to that organisation. And I'm making a comment on whether or not council should be working with this. It's perfectly reasonable. I take your point and I'll moderate my language, but the suggestion that it's not appropriate for me to criticise a particular entity...
Councillor Sri, can you move on to discussion of the item before us, please?
So I was cut off, but I was also going to add that Brisbane Racing Club are blood-sucking vultures.
Councillor Sri, can you sit down, please? Please sit.
No, no, I'm perfectly entitled to make these comments.
You cannot describe an organisation in the manner you have just described.
They can sue me if they want, bring it on. Let them sue me, but this is a, this is a chamber of open public debate and I'm not reflecting adversely on the character of any individuals. So, look, if...
Point of order, Chair.
If you want to censor me and...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I understand there's some discussion going on between councillor Sri and yourself. There's a whole lot of commentary from councillor Owen, it's very audible, deputy mayor councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor. Could you just ask those councillors to not interject so much? I'm just trying to follow along with what your ruling on this will be. No, no, you're not, you're not.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Sri, I consider that you're displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 25 of the meeting local law, I hereby request that you cease using the language you have to use to describe organisations that exist in our city.
Sure, Chair, in the interest of diplomacy, I won't use any more adjectives to describe the organisation, but for the record, I would like to emphasise that I don't think it is your place to determine whether a councillor can make commentary about an organisation. I think in a healthy democracy, where we're making, having open public debates about what organisations council should be giving leases to, et cetera, I do think it's important that councillors aren't censored from freely expressing their opinion about those organisations. I'll refrain from commenting further on the organisation itself, but I hope for the sake of the record, it's noted that if council is debating whether or not to give a lease to an organisation, then councillors in this chamber need to be free to reflect on the suitability of those organisations. What I did want to do in picking up on councillor Griffiths' comments, though, was to highlight that the model, the business model used by an organisation like Brisbane Racing Club is inherently parasitic, and that's the description of the business model. And I don't think anyone could reasonably disagree with that. And anyone who's surprised at the fact that Brisbane Racing Club is not investing in this facility out at Acacia Ridge just needs to check their facts and check their head and recognise that this is perfectly in keeping with a business model that extracts wealth from poor and vulnerable people, that rips off problem gamblers, that sucks money out of those families and those communities via the poker machine industry.
Mister Chair, just like to ask whether councillor Sri would like to take a question?
Councillor Sri, would you take a question?
By that logic, would you consider the Kedron Wavell Services Club or the Karina Leagues Club or the East Leagues Club to be described by similar adjectives?
Thanks for the question, Lord Mayor. I think the value that some of those other community clubs you've mentioned offers to the community is quantifiably different. But I do have concerns about the poker machines in those clubs as well. I wouldn't use such strong language to describe those other organisations because I think they do provide a broader range of community benefits and they serve and meet important needs in the community. But I do think all councils in this place need to recognise how destructive poker machines are on communities. That's not a partisan comment, that's not, that shouldn't be controversial.
Point of order, Mister Chairman. Point of order, Mr Chairman. Poker machines are not part of this report.
Yes.
Yeah, they are, they're right there in the least. They're definitely in there and that's why I'm so angry. Because this council administration should not be doing deals with companies like this that rip off poor people, that screw over working communities, sucking money out of their pockets so they can buy fancy chairs for the racecourse in Ascot. That's really what's happening here, is that wealth is being extracted from a low-income, marginalised community to prop up a family and business model of an industry that doesn't even deserve the dignity of being described as a sport. This is contemptible, what Brisbane Racing Club is doing here. They're getting favourable treatment off council, free or subsidised real estate off council for, for a business that shouldn't even be considered a non-profit. This is animal abuse, this is exploitation of problem gamblers and it is reprehensible, it is reprehensible that our city would consider doing deals with an organisation like this. And I'm, I'm sorry to councillor Griffiths because I know he supported, he supported the initial release with, lease with some reservations, but mate, I think I told you so at the time, I said, this is not a good deal for these communities because this business model is not about helping communities, it's about ripping them off to lie in the pockets of wealthy racing aficionados. It is disgusting, it is contemptible. And like, I've looked at the details of what this, this report is actually asking for. They want to vary their contract so that they have to put less money from the poker machines back towards council. They say, oh, the state government's taxes on poker machines are too high, so we can't afford to give money to... Nonsense! They're making millions off poker machines. They're like, this, this business of crying, oh, we're the Brisbane Racing Club, we can't afford the, the charges. I mean, come on, no one's buying that. This club has so much money. I see how much money they spend lobbying people, I see how much money they get in subsidies and grants from the state, the federal government.
Point of order to you, councillor MacKay.
I'm just wondering if councillor Shree will take a question?
Sure, bring it on.
Councillor Shree, will you take a question?
I'm just wondering if you will ask the Greens to return the $100,000 donated by a professional gambler last year?
I actually have, for the record, but... But, but again, I think we're seeing some lazy conflation here of two different things. I'm, I'm talking about... No, we are. Say that again councillor Howard? No, no, look, the Chair, the Chair's not doing his job of moderating this chamber. I'm seeing continued interjections from other councillors in this chamber.
Councillor Shree, you're really pushing the boundaries, but please continue.
No, Chair, look, I won't, I won't argue with you, but I do think you've been very strict with me about what I can say, but I hear a lot of other councillors interjecting in this chamber and you're not calling them to order. And I do think that indicates a double standard and...
As you noted, please continue councillor Shree.
There, there is a distinction between someone who, who wins money off poker machines or off, off gaming, as opposed to the companies that have a business model which is structured around exploiting problem gamblers. And that's what we're talking about here. The Brisbane Racing Club has a parasitic business model which preys upon vulnerable gamblers and profits from animal abuse. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't even be supported to exist as a non-profit organisation in this city. And increasingly, more and more people are seeing just how morally bankrupt the racing industry is and are recognising that this is not the kind of city we want Brisbane to become. At least I take some hope and some reassurance from the fact that the majority of young people I talk to are vehemently opposed to horse racing, to greyhound racing, and they recognise that those, those are not things that a civilised society would support and would celebrate. And it seems inevitable to me that at some point Brisbane Racing Club is going to have to give up on making money from horse racing and greyhound racing altogether and shift to being another property developer. But in the meantime, my concern is that they're propping out a failing racing industry business model by ripping off poor people through poker machines. We know poker machines are designed to be addictive. We know they're designed to make it difficult for problem gamblers to say no. They're set up to rip people off. And Brisbane City Council's bending over backwards to support this industry, to support this lease that allows them to make more money off people while putting less money back into the community. If Brisbane Racing Club wants upgrades to this facility, they should have to pay for them themselves, they've got enough money, they don't need council to put in the money. They just don't want to spend the money out at Acacia Ridge, they'd rather spend it at Ascot. It's pretty simple, as far as I can see. This is, I don't, just can't believe that any councillor with a clean conscience would consider voting for this. This is just an embarrassment to the city that we'd even consider doing deals with parasites like this.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Aren't we having fun today? I rise to speak on item C, the amendment of the lease to the Brisbane Racing Club Limited.
Item D.
D, yeah, what?
You said C.
D, yeah, that's what I said. I want to put on the record my concern about this lease and it's largely through discussions with the local councillor that my concerns have manifested. I think councillor Shree's very colourful description of the racing club has some elements of concern in it and I absolutely support the fact that, you know, these gambling and poker machines are hugely detrimental to many, many people and can have terrible impacts on their finances and their lives. And it is concerning that council is doing a sweetheart deal with the Brisbane Racing Club. This is a big public corporation. Essentially, council is privatising sporting fields in Acacia Ridge. So, and I mean, no disrespect to anybody in Acacia Ridge, but one of the least socio-economically strong parts of our city has been, had all its community facilities taken over by an uber-wealthy commercial sporting club. Are we seeing the outcome of that social experiment translating into better outcomes on the ground for community sport in Acacia Ridge and surrounding suburbs? I don't think so, I haven't heard that from councillor Griffiths and perhaps that's still to come. But the big concern, yeah, but the big concern here is that council's handing over even more land, but we're not necessarily seeing the on-the-ground outcomes for the community sporting clubs that use these facilities. And it's very clear, of course, now there's a master plan, that there's no investment happening to support the master plan, either by the Brisbane Racing Corporation or by Brisbane City Council. And certainly, I agree with councillor Shree and councillor Griffiths on this, that the Brisbane Racing Club should be putting in more money to develop the facilities for the purpose of community sport. That is why the lease has been given. So what council is doing here is giving more land, more rights to develop to the Brisbane Racing Club and doing this deal where they have to actually deliver less money to invest in community sport. That's not a good outcome for anybody, not for anybody. You know, if you, if you partner together people in need and people with wealth, you want them to support the outcome of raising people up to get better community facilities, more kids playing sport, more adults playing sport, there's a whole range of sport that gets played down there. And we're just not seeing that actually happening. So whilst councillor Shree's description was extremely colourful, I certainly agree with some of the sentiments expressed. I absolutely hear councillor Griffiths when he says that there's something not right about this. And I think Brisbane City Council needs to reassess what's happening here because there's 25 years to run on this lease, like, it's, it's a ridiculous amount of time for the Brisbane Racing Club. And, you know, if all they, if they're getting a rails run, they're paying four grand a year for, for their rates. It's just, I know, it's $4,300 a year councillor Shree. They're getting a rails run, you know, in terms of the land, but we need to see the outcomes which are better community sporting facilities, more investment in community supporting facilities and the lease arrangements that council is currently entering into in this amendment don't support that objective.
Thank you, further speakers, councillor Howard.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair. I don't believe that I've ever heard so much garbage from that side of the council for the entire, almost 10 years that I have been in this place. And for the local councillor to make the comments that he made is absolutely deplorable when I know full well, I've spoken to him, my officers have given him briefings, we have been briefed with the state, the local state member, the racing club, everybody's been talking to him, but he stands up here as if nobody has told him anything. It is just a disgrace and I can't even begin to, to start on councillor Shree's comments and, and the independent councillor. You would think that they knew everything about this particular thing, wouldn't you, from hearing them? Garbage. Let me set the record straight. Okay, since the approval of the lease, Brisbane Racing Club Limited has expended $1.8 million. Can I just repeat that number? $1.8 million on capital improvements to the sports club.
Point of order, councillor Shree to you, councillor Howard.
Will councillor Howard take a question?
No, I won't.
No. Continue councillor Howard.
Let me just say it again because despite councillor Cassidy standing up and whinging about people interrupting, what do you think they're doing to me right now? I have the right to stand up here and have my debate heard in silence without the interaction. Let me start again then, Mr Chair. Since the approval of the lease, Brisbane Racing Club Limited has expended $1.8 million on capital improvements to the sports club on the premises and provided over $412,000 in community contributions to June 30, 2020.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Would councillor Howard take a question about the upgrade of the poker machine room that was used for this one?
No, I won't take a question, Mr Chair.
Councillor Johnston, no, councillor Howard won't take a question. Continue, please councillor Howard.
So, thank you, Mr Chair. Brisbane Racing Club are extremely committed to this future, the future of this site and council is working with all the tenants. Anyone would think they're the only tenants on the site, what garbage! There are, there is, I think there's a Spanish club, there's a soccer club, I can't remember all of them because it's a very large site. And the Mortimer Road Park Sport and Recreation Precinct Plan was only finalised in February 2021. The lease boundary was therefore not resolved in time when this was happening. That precinct plan is our future, that's what we're working towards. It's what the Brisbane Racing Club want to work towards, it's what, it's what all of the sports clubs that are on the site. We want these clubs to work together. We very much like them to work with their own local councillor and if I was the local councillor, I would be supporting each and every one of them that was going to help me make this precinct plan, the brilliant precinct that it could be happening.
Councillor Griffiths, please.
So, let me just say it again. I am very disappointed to be hearing from the local councillor when I know full well how much work my officers, the officers from this particular area have put into this precinct plan. Not only the precinct plan, talking to the racing club, talking to the local council, talking to the local state member. It's an absolute nonsense for people to stand up in this chamber and say that we're not doing enough when I know full well that we will...
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Okay, noted.
Okay, perhaps I wasn't listening carefully enough before. So, through you, Mr Chair, we will be undertaking work on the concept plan for the car park and the playing field in the new year, which will properly inform the costing so that we can take this project forward. The, the Brisbane Racing Club have been talking to us about their willingness to invest and as I've said, they have already invested over a million dollars, $1.8 million on those capital improvements and are very committed to supporting the other community organisations that are on this precinct. I'll just leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you. Further speakers on D. Oh, sorry, point of misrepresentation, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. I, I never said I didn't support the master plan, I actually said I did support the master plan and a lot of that money was spent on the pokeys room.
Thank you. Further speakers on D. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I want to echo councillor Howard's comments on the contribution that we've seen to the debate here today. Absolutely unbelievable. I think there are some times when we see, when we see members of the opposition show their true colours and today was one of those days. Councillor Shree, he would love, he would love people to think that he's warm and cuddly and loves koalas, loves saving trees, but there's, there's something else bubbling there below the surface and we saw it today. Because councillor Shree, who regularly in this chamber gets up and says, oh, look, the major parties, they're lowering the tone of debate. Have you heard him say that?
Yeah.
And we hear him lecturing other people, yet he gets up here and defames what is an important organisation in our city. And, oh, wait, hang on a second.
Councillor Griffiths, please.
Councillor Griffiths just said... What did he say? Important organisation for the Liberal Party, that was his, that was his... Well, I don't see any kind of council funding for Brisbane Racing Club, but I see a lot of state Labour government support. So, I don't know who, I don't know who we're talking about here, but the state government pumps millions and millions of dollars into the racing industry and, and you see, you see here councillor Shree railing against it, yet as part of any kind of government situation, either in this council or in this state, who would councillor Shree support? Labour or the LMP? We know it's Labour all the way. So, don't listen to what, don't listen to what he says. What he is trying to do is the same thing that councillor Griffiths was trying to do, it's called divide and conquer. It's called, it's called class warfare. It is called, it is the lowest of the low tactic in politics and so...
Point of order, Chair. Councillor Shree, point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
And we see councillor Griffiths use this same tactic desperately, over and over again, over and over again. Yet what we have here is an organisation that's quite clearly invested significantly into his local community and supporting the many other organisations that are there. And, and what we heard was class warfare. Class warfare. And so, let me go back to what councillor Shree said about organisations that are involved either in horse racing or gambling, because they were the two issues that he raised of concern. I did raise the question, well, does that mean, you know, Kedron Wavell or East Leagues Club or Karina Leagues Club? And you can all think of the examples right across the city where there are organisations on either council land or state government land which have gambling facilities. We can think of plenty of examples, too many to list. And suddenly, this is not okay. Councillor Shree then said, oh, but those organisations give back to the community, suggesting that Brisbane Racing Club only spent money in Ascot and not in the local community. That is a disgraceful slur and a complete misrepresentation of the facts.
Councillor Shree, point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented. Well, we, we heard, we heard. So, East Leagues Club, Karina Leagues Club, those kind of examples, Kedron Wavell, yes, they do support the community. They do put money back into the community, they support local sporting organisations, they put money into, they give grants and sponsorship. Oh, and guess what? So does Brisbane Racing Club.
Yes.
And in fact, if you have a look at their annual report, you will see the quantum of that. And in fact, in a recent financial year, just in one financial year, they gave out more than $500,000 worth of grants to more than 100 different organisations. And so councillor Shree would try to suggest that they are somehow different to other clubs that give support and sponsorship. They do exactly the same type of thing as these other clubs. And so it is actually outrageous that we've seen this slur and slanderous claim against what is a legitimate sporting organisation in the city of Brisbane, one that is heavily supported by the Labor State Government in George Street, one that pumps millions of dollars into racing, but also one that receives millions of dollars out of racing as well.
Will the mayor take a question?
Lord Mayor, will you take a question, councillor Shree?
No. I'm, I'm concerned like you are about the tone of debate in this place, councillor Shree, and we've heard enough lectures to know that you speak with forked tongue on this issue. Because when there's an opportunity to make a statement and get a bit of media and to drive the wedge down, to play that class politics, you'll go for it. and to drive the wedge down, to play that class politics, you'll go for it. So, what we see here is a very simple and straightforward amendment to allow an application to be put in, and as I said very clearly upfront, so that Brisbane Racing Club, as let's see, can continue supporting the local community with their investment and continue supporting local sporting facilities and clubs as they're doing. And for an organisation to be labelled this way, I think is really disappointing and a new low in this council chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Shree, your point of misrepresentation.
Thanks Chair. The first point of misrepresentation was that the Lord Mayor accused me of engaging in class warfare. And I just wanted to be very, very clear that the real act of class warfare was that an organisation that makes $6 million in 2019 in revenue from wagering and poker machines was placed in a low-income vulnerable community. The second point of misrepresentation was the Lord Mayor suggesting that, or implying that I had somehow criticised or attacked other community clubs. And I want to be very clear that the fundamental distinction is that those other community groups are forced into using poker machines because of the failure of all levels of government to adequately support the sports and community club sector. That's why they end up dependent on poker machines. Sure. And I want to be very clear about that distinction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we now move to the vote on item D, the amendment to the lease of Brisbane Racing Club. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division second.
Division being called by the deputy mayor and councillor Landers. Please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. The division is on item D. All in favour of item D, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Abstentions? Clerks?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The venue being 19 in favour, one against and five abstentions.
Thank you. Declare item D carried. We now move on to item E. Item E, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item E relates to the report of the contracts and tendering report for the month of October 2021. Pleased to report that this year, sorry, this month, we had actually 100% of contracts going to local South East Queensland businesses. Not 80%, 100%. And that brings our tally for the year so far to 83.89%. So, just a touch under 84%, which is a great outcome. And once again, more evidence that we are supporting local business actively and wherever possible, giving those local businesses and the people they employ an opportunity in the major public works that we're delivering, including the Newham and Wecker Road intersection upgrade, the Moghl Road corridor upgrade stage one with our road resurfacing programme, with a whole range of improvements, including some simple things like the Tarrig India Reservoir Fire Shed, a small but important project. And a whole range of works associated with the Rochedale Road and Priestdale Road intersection upgrade. And also the design of the Inogura Road, Morin Street and Lloyd Street intersection upgrade as well. So, a lot of, I guess, contracts coming through for approval. And once again, we're actively supporting local business while gearing up the infrastructure of the city.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause E, the contracts and tendering document for this month. And again, each week, it feels like every single week and certainly every month, these contracts come through to council. There is basic work being contracted out to the lowest bidders. And this report is certainly no different. It's a bit of Groundhog Day, but the numbers are bigger and some of those contracts are eye-watering. We have a contract for road resurfacing and rehabilitation worth $150 million and a contract for something called smoother suburban streets for $6 million. So, it's $156 million worth of the most basic and ongoing council work that is being dished out to labor hire companies, which is promoting insecure and casual and temporary employment. And this is exactly the kind of work that should be brought in-house. And more of this work should be brought in-house. And the trend should be the other direction. It should be more of this work being done in-house, not less and less, to create more stable jobs for Brisbane, for Brisbane residents and their families. Now, here we also have a $2.4 million contract for footpath grinding. $2.4 million, not footpath replacements, not reconstructions, not replacements, but $2.4 million worth of footpath grinding, which is $2.4 million worth of Band-Aid solutions to a problem that is plaguing this city. And we've heard, we've heard the Lord Mayor and the relevant chairs over the last year say that dangerous footpaths and broken footpaths aren't a problem. And they say that they're fixing them all the time. Well, we see the answers to the questions on notice today. That list, that list continues to grow. Because all these new ones are being added, Chair. All these new broken dangerous footpaths are being added to that list all the time. And ones are being pulled off because they're having things like grinding applied to them and bits of asphalt and bitumen put on them. And apparently then they're fixed. So, we see here the Adrian Shrinaway of suburban investment and just putting Band-Aids over things and hoping no one will notice. Well, Chair, they are noticing. People are noticing. And there's still, still over 1,000 broken dangerous footpaths in need of serious repair and replacement, not these temporary Band-Aid solutions. So perhaps, Chair, perhaps if the Lord Mayor spent less money on pointless apps and advertising himself, we would see an awful lot more money being put into, into genuine community infrastructure out in the suburbs. Also listed in these contracts is $102 million for a roundabout. That's the roundabout that's already, already blown out by $60 million over at Indrapilly. And that's before it even started. And now we're seeing this $102 million being allocated for that project. And this is all happening on this LMP mayor's watch. This is, he continues, Chair, to be the king of cost blowouts and costs Brisbane residents big time. No, it's evident here and the next item is coming as well that no project is safe from this LMP lord mayor's mismanagement. Residents are paying more and more and they're getting less and less out in the suburbs, Chair. And finally, finally, there's this enormous $180 million to be spent on something called infrastructure design consultancy. And why does the LMP need to spend $180 million on something called infrastructure design consultancy? That's because under successive LMP lord mayors, we've seen the hollowing out of councils' capabilities in doing in-house engineering in terms of planning for major projects. So, we see the less, the less capability that Brisbane City Council has to, to plan and design major infrastructure projects, the more this LMP administration spends on external consultancies. And there is a direct correlation between cost blowouts on those major projects. Look at the Brisbane Metro, a $300 million cost blowout. Look at the Indrapilly Roundabout, a $60 million cost blowout. Look at the Kingston Smith Drive project. They didn't even know, they didn't even know what was in the Brisbane River before they signed these contracts. And that led to up to some, in some, some estimates, up to $190 million in extra money spent on a project that if it was planned and designed properly and council actually had engineers that could do this work instead of doling that out to the lowest bidder in the private sector, we wouldn't see these cost blowouts, Chair. So, if we had those skilled in-house engineers, it would reduce the need for these extensive and expensive consultancies. What we see, what we see time and again, and the more that these, these projects are contracted out, is not only does council not have any ability to properly plan and execute these projects, but we have to employ a whole other level of management to manage external contracts and then manage the legal disputes between those contractors and councils, and council, which inevitably come up. So, the only thing that this lord mayor and his right-wing ideologues on that side are doing are costing rate payers more. There are less secure jobs in Brisbane because of the political decisions the LMP make. And rate payers are paying more for these external consultancies and for these, these other consultants to come in and manage more consultants. It's absolute economic insanity, Chair, in the size of a council, of the Brisbane City Council, to be spending this kind of money on all these external consultancies. But again, this is what this LMP administration and this LMP lord mayor, Adrian Shrinaw, are all about.
Thank you. Further speakers on item E. Further speakers on E? No further speakers? Oh, sorry, there you are councillor Johnston. Away you go.
Yes, thank you so much. Just thought perhaps somebody might stand up on the other side and talk about all this... Yeah, they do have a massive majority. I rise to speak briefly on item E. One of the big concerns I have with all the information that's in the reports here before us today is there really aren't a lot of figures, other than the headline figures attached to these panels that are being set up. So, it would be really quite useful if they were broken down, but we don't have any information about that. So, you know, just to take an example, infrastructure design consultancy services, it says there's $180 million, which is attached to the schedule. And then there are numerous schedules. So, environmental segment acoustic, environmental segment odor and emissions, environmental segment environmental, environmental segment energy and carbon, environmental segment land resources, environmental segment waste and resources, environmental segment erosion and sediment control, environmental segment contaminated land management. And it goes, it goes on and on for pages and pages. And there is absolutely no breakdown of how much money is being associated with each of the relevant discipline areas within this. So, it's a very big $180 million slush fund for consultants to do work for council. There's zero accountability in the way in which this is being administered by council. And, you know, I don't think that that is a good approach to take. It struck me when I was reading this that almost every consulting engineer in Brisbane must be annoyed with council because most of them applied to be on the panel and most of them missed out. A few have got multiple gigs. But I can see that there's quite a lot of local companies that have missed out. Two very major, major international sort of consultancies as well. There's some local ones in there without question, but there's quite a few really big ones as well. So, I guess my concern is the lack of financial rigor attached to the report before us today for the allocation of funding for consultancies within council. But I guess that's the way the LMP likes it. They just want to have the money sitting there so that they stuff up one project, they can just roll it over into another project. I did also note, you know, the footpath expenditure in here as well. It's very concerning when the focus is on grinding rather than replacing broken, old and broken footpaths. And in answer to the questions on notice today, there are phenomenal amount of footpaths that need fixing around this city. And I agree, the amount of footpaths where I walk back over them and I can see that they've been ground, but the giant cracks and the displaced lodges and the really dodgy old concrete hasn't been fixed. And I ring up and say, "Oh, but we fixed that, councillor." And I'm like, "No, that's not been fixed." So, there is definitely a problem. And this council and this lord mayor are in absolute denial if they think footpaths in this city are in any decent state because they absolutely are not. I see there's another almost million dollars to go on the Witten Barracks site. I mean, that's, I don't know how many millions of dollars have been spent on the Witten Army Barracks at this point, but it's... Yeah, I mean, all to prop up a, what was a very safe LMP ward, which is now an extremely marginal LMP ward. And there's just money being tipped, tipped into that. And I don't know necessarily whether that represents value for money. There's not a lot of detail here before us today as to what's going to happen. There's plenty of money for LMP wards, like you have a look at that. So, that one's Walter Taylor, then we've got Ashgrove, then we've got Pickering Street, that'd be Inogra, I'd be thinking, Tarragindy. Oh, here's one for you councillor Griffith, the Salisbury Recreational Reserve, hard courts in Evans Road. I presume that $202,000 might be to resurface those hard courts?
It's taken 15 years.
15 years? Well done. Congratulations councillor Griffiths. We've got funding again for Inogra Ward, Priestdale, Rochedale. Yeah, that'd be an LMP ward. So, it's fascinating to read through here and see all the wonderful LMP projects, you know, that are being delivered around the city. And, you know, in the first motion of debate in the council today, I stood up and said, "This administration is not governing for the whole city" and it's pretty, pretty clear to see in the contracts before us today. I think that might do it. I probably, I probably left something out on this one. I just have to... Yeah, thanks. That'll do.
Further debate on item E? Any further debate on item E? Lord Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. If there's one thing that is very clear in this contracts and tendering report is that we're investing more in the suburbs. We're investing more to upgrade infrastructure. We're investing more to fix roads, more to fix footpaths. And it's interesting because we heard a little bit of commentary about footpath grinding as though that this was some kind of like, you know, silly thing that we shouldn't be doing. Well, when you consider that more than half of the cracked footpaths that we come across have been cracked or lifted as a result of tree roots and ground movement, that is the, that is the number one reason for footpath repair requests. Tree roots getting into a footpath and maybe lifting them up or affecting the concrete footpath. The idea that somehow grounding is not, grinding is somehow not a legitimate way of making a footpath safe? I mean, these guys live in some kind of fantasy land. This is absolutely an important part of our overall agenda. But if you have a look at the contract cost, $2.4 million over a two-year period. So, $1.2 million a year out of the 45 million that is available for footpaths. And so councillor Cassidy, he comes up with this figure that, "Oh, there's 1,000 footpaths that need fixing." We fix 1,000 footpaths a week. We fix 1,000 footpaths a week. And we're building a new concrete footpath literally every day around the city. There's a new one being built every day. And so we see it every working day, a new concrete footpath is being built around the city. And so what's happening here is the Labour councillors and other councillors have come across this... have come across this figure, oh, a thousand, that sounds like a lot. That's how many, that's how many we fix every week. Literally how many we fix every week. We get in there and we do a thousand repairs a week, uh, and we're building a new concrete footpath every working day of the year. Uh, yet Labour continues to try and manufacture, uh, the claim that there's somehow not enough, not enough funding for footpaths. Uh, yet when they were in administration, and they were in administration for a very long time, they literally spent a pittance on footpaths, yet they would want us to believe, or they want the people of Brisbane to believe, that they would somehow do better. Uh, we've got, uh, an excellent and growing programme of investment in footpaths, and it's growing each year, and the investment each year is getting bigger and bigger. And it, it, it's really, you know, just a, a lame attempt by Labour to suggest, uh, that somehow not enough is being done when more than ever before is being done. And that is the reality. Uh, but, look, when you've got an opposition whose number one issue is, um, living in Brisbane, that's their top issue, and whose number two issue is an allowance that they introduced, um, and that the leader of the opposition collects each week, um, I don't know what he does with it, because there's no accountability there. Um, uh, but the reality is, you know, they just make things up. That's their approach. Um, and I think that councillors on this side of the chamber can take some comfort in the fact that the only issues that they've got are the issues that are completely manufactured. Um, so it's a good way to end the year, knowing that, uh, the investment, the hard work we're putting in is paying off because Labour's got nothing, absolutely nothing. Uh, manufactured issues, fake issues, uh, and footpaths, when they, when they say that's an issue, that's the fakest issue of all of them, because the funding has never been higher and the amount of work that's been going on across the city has never been bigger. Uh, so this contracts and tendering report illustrates all the many things we're doing right across the suburbs of Brisbane. Uh, and, um, for councillor Johnston to once again say that there's a lot happening in LMP wards, um, I will remind her that the LMP holds 73% of the wards in Brisbane. So there should be a lot happening, uh, in those wards simply by, uh, the, the sheer number of LMP wards, that the people of Brisbane have elected LMP councillors, uh, to represent them. Why? Because they do a good job and they take those issues seriously, and we're focused on investing more in the suburbs, uh, as we have always been. So, uh, I commend this report. Uh, and by the way, councillor Johnson, your ward is an LMP ward too. Uh, it is an LMP ward because that's the way they vote at the Lord Mayor level. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, the vote is now on item E, contracts and tendering, item E. All in favour of E, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no.
None.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Divided. Called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. The division vote is on item E, the contracts and tendering report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye!
Thank you. Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. And abstentions? Thank you. Clarks? Clarks?
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 19 in favour, one against and four abstentions.
Thank you, councillors. We now move on to item F, construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve District Sports Park. Lord Mayor, item F.
Point of order.
Sorry, point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I seek the further following information with respect to item F, uh, regarding construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve. The report before us today does not, um, provide any information about, uh, how much funding has been allocated, uh, to this project in the council budget. Um, that information is normally provided, uh, in, uh, major contractual matters, and given this is a variation to, uh, the contract, uh, it's unclear whether there is, um, fu- enough funding allocated in the budget to support the requested increase. Uh, so can the Lord Mayor please clar- clarify how much funding was allocated in the, uh, budget, uh, for the Nudgy Recreation Reserve prog- prog- project?
Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, item F, uh, is the stores board submission relating to the significant contracting plan for the construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve District Sports, uh, Programme, uh, Sports Park. And, uh, this item is to amend the original contracting plan that came to council in March this year. Uh, we've since been out to market, uh, and in the competitive process of the market, and also in, um, in an environment which has seen construction costs escalate massively this year, uh, we've had to make adjustments to this, uh, contracting plan. Uh, what has effectively happened is that the budget, uh, for this, uh, is set and it's approved, uh, and so we've adjusted the components of the, uh, plan that, uh, will be delivered upfront. And so what will happen is effectively that, uh, there are components which will, uh, absolutely and must be delivered as part of this contracting plan, uh, and then there are some additional components which can then be delivered, uh, if the project then comes in under the expected budget. Uh, but based on what we know at the moment, uh, the, uh, the expected budget is not going to be enough to do all of the things in stage one that we had hoped to do. Uh, and so they'll be, uh, able to be done if the project comes in under budget and there's surplus funds available. Uh, if not, then they will be done in future budgets as part of a, a future programme of works. Uh, so this is obviously, uh, the nature of the market at the moment. We're seeing construction costs going up on a range of, uh, council and government and private projects. Uh, there's also supply chain issues as well, uh, and, um, that's, that's infect- affecting the entire construction industry. So, uh, what we will see here is, uh, and specifically to answer councillor Johnston's question, uh, the budget of this project is not changing. That's not what's happening here. Uh, what we're simply doing is making, uh, part of the project that we had anticipated originally to do, um, as, uh, optional extras if the budget comes in under. So effectively what we're doing is cutting the cloth to measure on this project. Uh, if we do find savings throughout the project, then we'll, we'll be able to deliver more. Um, but this allows us to go ahead and on that basis, keeping the budget as the budget. Uh, and, uh, as I said, if, um, if we're able to do more, we will do more. If not, uh, we will, uh, do further work as part of, uh, future stages of this particular sports park. So, uh, I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this, the construct, this item, the construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve and District Sports Park. Uh, and this clause is about overhauling the contracting plan for the Nudgy Rec Reserve District Sports Park. Um, a sports park out in the northern, uh, northern suburbs of Brisbane that's been on the agenda for the last 15 years, and now we're seeing a significant change to the contracting plan for this major recreation reserve because the LMP failed to properly cost this project and provide sufficient funding, uh, in the council budget just a few months ago. And lo and behold, you hollow out council's capabilities, our in-house capabilities to properly plan for and cost and budget these projects, and, and what do you get? You get these major changes to projects just before they're about to start, major cost blowouts. This is, this is another project on a very long list, Chair, that has had a cost blowout and a delay before one single shovel has hit the dirt. Uh, and what's more, it's because, um, and what's, what's worse for the community is that because of this cost blowout, uh, and these delays that will inevitably happen, uh, this LMP administration, the LMP Lord Mayor and the local LMP councillor, who's the, who's a civic cabinet chair, has decided to absolutely gut this project. Uh, residents were promised, Chair, a BMX track, that's been cut. They were promised a dog-off leash area, that's gone. Uh, they were told this district park would include a fitness park and a playground for local families. Both of these have been ripped from this project as well. Um, this is more proof that they can't be, this LMP administration can't be trusted to deliver on their promises. And this wasn't just something that was funded and promised in the last budget, this was an election commitment by the Lord Mayor and the local LMP councillor. So those residents out there in Northgate Ward will be sitting there when they read about this and thinking, how can you trust Adrian Sriner and Adam Allen to deliver on their commitments? Now, the local councillor chair, Adam Allen, was the finance chair when this tender was put together, and now he's the planning chair, as I mentioned, while it's being gutted. Uh, these are very key roles in this administration, and you'd think, uh, he would use them to try and deliver for his community on this project, but he has evidently failed miserably. We see this time and time again from these LMP councillors in this LMP administration. We see it on things like five green bridges, we'll be very lucky if we see three of them, very lucky indeed. That metro that started as an underground rail system, and now it's just a $1.2 billion short busway extension, and overseas made electric buses that were made to look like Tram's chair, and now this key suburban project in the northern suburbs is being completely mismanaged as well. So it goes to show, all of those documents, plans, provisions for infrastructure that have come through this chamber over the last two weeks are not worth the paper they're written on, because this project appeared not only in the LGIP and the LTIP throughout the last couple of years, but also on the priority infrastructure plan for this council for many, many, many years. And they were finally promised that it was going to happen, and lo and behold, something that LMP Lord Mayor Adrian Sriner touches, uh, turns to a delay and a cost blowout. He really has the reverse Midas touch, doesn't he, when it comes to almost every single significant project, whether it is in the, in, in the inner city or in the suburbs of, of Brisbane, Chair? So you can't take any LMP councillor in this chamber at their word because they continue, obviously, to prioritise themselves and fail to deliver for the people of Brisbane. Because the one thing that never gets delayed, and the one thing that always has additional money put into it, is that advertising budget, of course, the marketing budget. There, there, there is never a delay in those pamphlets going out. There is now an increased number of them, uh, and an increased budget on them as well. So I think, I think residents in the Northgate Ward and residents increasingly around Brisbane, uh, are once bitten, twice shy when it comes to this LMP administration these days. Uh, this LMP administration, and especially, uh, the current mayor, Adrian Sriner, should be hanging their heads in shame for how shockingly mismanaged this project has been, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Davis?
Uh, well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item F, the construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve District Sports Park. And, um, can I say from the outset, once again, we have some, uh, over catastrophisation of, of what is in front of us here. As the Lord Mayor has, um, has said, uh, this particular project, um, in front of us, um, will be delivered, although the scope will be a little less because of the pricing that, um, has come in on it. And anybody who has been, uh, watching the construction industry over the last, uh, 18 months to two years to seeing that, um, things have changed and prices have gone up, whether it's governments of any level, or even, um, for residents who are doing renovations around their home, myself included, who, the deck that I thought was going to cost me X dollars is now about 20% more expensive because that is... Well, do you know what, Lord Mayor? The deck is built, but you know, I'll just have to wait and see if there are any future opportunities for me to do this extra little embellishment. So this project will go ahead. It will go ahead, and works will commence, uh, in early 2022, not as councillor Cassidy indicated, uh, that it wouldn't go ahead at all. Uh, but the reality is that there have been some challenges in terms of the costings on, on this particular, on this particular project, and it's not, um, uh, only on this project, we're finding across council that there have been some challenges in terms of, uh, the tender prices that have come, uh, that have come back in. Um, I'm looking forward to working with the local councillor, um, on the first part of this project, which will deliver the sporting fields and, um, some other amenities and the, the new building there, and working with you councillor, um, Allen, uh, to deliver that second phase, um, in the future, hopefully earlier, uh, than, um, than down the track if we are able to, um, to see some savings over the course, um, of this project. So I'm looking forward to delivering this, uh, for the, for the residents of, um, of Brisbane and the residents, um, uh, in your ward, councillor, um, Allen, because it will be a wonderful project and it will be a wonderful addition to the district in sports parks, uh, in our city.
Thank you. Further speakers on item F? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on item F, the, um, Nudgy Recreation, uh, Reserve District Sports Park. And I note the Lord Mayor has left the chamber and he couldn't be bothered to answer a question about this, uh, matter. I actually went back and had a look at, um, what came through in March, um, and it's quite shocking that the Lord Mayor appears unaware of the increases, um, that council is being asked to approve today. I don't know if the budget funding is available to do so, and he's been unable to answer the question. Um, it's not written in the report anywhere before us today, and that is unusual. In any financial reports, there is always information about whether the change in the scope of the project, uh, is, uh, available to be funded from the existing budget. That information has been left out altogether. Now, the other thing the Lord Mayor said is this is not really about increasing the cost of the project. Well, uh, yes, it is. Um, the papers before us today point to, uh, potentially $2 million cost overrun, and that's certainly what the secret information that we are not allowed to discuss, which this council has determined is commercial in confidence, is not allowed to discuss. Uh, this is an eye-watering amount of money, uh, for, uh, this project, um, and the cost is blowing out. So the Lord Mayor is fundamentally wrong. The bit that's in there in page, uh, paragraph 49 of this report clearly says, um, that there's a $1.9 million adjustment. It does say it may be more and it may be less, so it might end up being well over, uh, $2 million. Um, so let's be clear, um, back in March, um, council was fully aware of the issues surrounding the construction industry. Uh, they're listed in the significant contact, uh, contracting plan as issues for this council to address. It looked at possible delays, it looked at possible, um, problems with logistics and supply chains. That was all identified in the significant contracting plan back in March, um, some nine months ago. Uh, the reason that those risks are outlined in the significant contracting plan is to, um, manage them as part of the delivery of the project. Now, clearly, clearly, um, the LMP are unable to do that. And councillor Davies stands up and says, oh, there's nothing really to see here, this is all, all to do with COVID and, and we'll, we'll, we'll eventually get, we'll eventually get to delivering all this. this. You came to council just nine months ago and said, this is what we're going to do. Nine months later, you have gutted this project, and like, no BMX track, no dog-off-leash area, no fitness paths, no playgrounds, all cut from this, all cut from this project, and it's going to cost more. So it's not a matter of we're just changing the scope and we're going to do a few things later. That actually has real impacts on other parts of the city when this project gets funded again in future years and other parts of the city, including my ward, miss out. I mean, if I had that much money, I could fund every park project ever invented in Tennyson Ward and then have leftovers to share with, you know, ten other councillors. It's obscene, the amount of money that's being allocated to this project, and then the deliverables are not being delivered, and they're a cost overrun. That's actually what this paper before us today says. So without the information that I've requested from the Lord Mayor about what was actually budgeted, because there is a $2 million potential overrun that has been identified here that we are being asked to support today, I don't know whether there is funding in the budget to pay for that, or whether or not other projects are going to be cut in the second budget review to actually fund this. Now, I suspect the finance chair's got no idea. She doesn't seem to have much idea about what's going on, but perhaps she'll stand up and say, yes, councillor Johnston, in the council budget, we budgeted $30 million for this project. I suspect she's got no idea. She's sitting next to the former finance chairperson and the local councillor, so perhaps she'll stand up and say, yes, councillor Johnston, we budgeted X amount of dollars, and this variation to the contract is within the scope of the amount allocated to the budget, because no one's been able to clarify that. And it has very real impacts for other projects and deliverables around the city. And this is why the budget reviews get out of control, because LMP projects that get stuffed up have to be fixed up, and money is taken off other projects that are needed in other parts of the city, and they're not delivered. So, far from what councillor Davies and the Lord Mayor have said today, this project is a failed project. And it's another example of how this LMP administration is unable to deliver on their own election promises. There is a major cost overrun of $2 million, possibly more, and there is a major reduction in the scope of the project. So the project's costing more and residents are getting less. That's not good value for money. That actually is a very poor reflection upon the parks chair, the finance chair, and the local councillor, I guess. I don't know how much say he's got in it, but certainly it's of concern that no one can actually stand up and say, yes, we have enough money to pay for these variations. That was a simple question, and it'd be useful if someone knew.
Thank you. Further speakers on item F? Any further speakers? Thank you. We'll now move to the vote on item F. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Sri. Ring the bells. Councillors, the division is on the vote for item F. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Abstentions? Thank you, Clarks.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour, one against, and four abstentions.
Thank you. Clear that carried. We now move on to item G. Item G, Lord Mayor, City of Brisbane Investment Corporation Limited, Financing Approval.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As councillors are aware, CBIC, the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, is our urban wealth fund or future fund, investing in projects which deliver value and dividends for the ratepayers of Brisbane, and allow us to diversify our income source so that we don't only rely on rates revenue, but there's other sources of income which allow us to do more and deliver more. The annual dividends from CBIC are invested into the green future of our city, with millions of dollars being put into approved parkland and green space across Brisbane. The CBIC story is a story of incredible success. Initial seed funding of $135 million has now grown to approximately $311 million in assets. But on top of that, so from $135 to $311, but on top of that, we have seen more than $150 million in dividends paid back to Brisbane City Council. So you take the $311, you include the $150, that's $461 million of value that has been generated from an initial investment of $135 million. So that is fantastic. We've seen annual returns since the inception of the fund back in 2008, being an average of 11.5% a year. So that is a good return over some years that have had lots of ups and downs financially, so incredibly strong returns there. And just last year alone, we saw profits of more than $35 million generated by CBIC. So this has been something that generates significant value for the ratepayers of Brisbane, is something that we on this side are committed to. But we're about to hear, no doubt, that it's something that those on the other side are not committed to, because whenever they see a pot of money, they need to get their paws on to it, and they need to spend it as quickly as possible. And so we know that when the fund was started with $135 million, Labour was against it then, and they wanted to spend it. And so what would have happened is, $135 million would have been spent, and that would have been the end of it. Gone. But now we've seen $461 million of value generated out of that from an initial investment. And so it is a good news story. It allows us to diversify our income streams, and more importantly, it allows us to put money directly into parkland and green space, which is a strong commitment that we have made going forward. This particular item makes an adjustment to the need for E and C to be involved in the decision-making process of the board. And so CBIC has been set up with a board of directors. Those people have been selected because of their expertise in their appropriate fields that relate to this fund and investment, and they have been doing a fantastic job, as I've mentioned, with the returns that they've delivered. And so a number of years ago, there was a requirement placed on them that E and C had to sign off on any investments of $5 million or more, and that effectively made us decision-makers in their board process. And that is, I don't think, an ideal situation. If they are an independent board making decisions based on what they think the best investment outcomes will be, based on the parameters we set, then coming through to E and C for an approval for their decisions is not, is not the best and most, I guess, optimum way of doing things from a board management point of view. So what we're doing instead is we're setting very clear parameters on how they should operate, and also on their investment decisions and borrowing limits. Now, those parameters make it clear what our expectations are from CBIC, but also they include things like setting borrowing limits for CBIC based on that the borrowings must not exceed 35% of their property assets. So we're effectively putting a cap of a percentage on to their borrowing limit. And of course, as their asset base continues to grow, then their borrowing limit will change. In the past, they've had a fixed dollar amount as a borrowing limit, but that's not something that adapts as the fund continues to grow. Now, I very much doubt that the Queensland Investment Corporation makes their decisions in reference to the state cabinet. I very much doubt that happens. They have an independent board, those board directors, based on their expertise, make their own decisions on how QIC invests, and so we are happy to operate in a similar manner to that. And so this will continue to see responsible financial management of the fund occur within those set limits, which include limits on the leverage of the fund, the cash flow ratios, and also an annual testing of their investments based on their audited financial statements. So there's a lot of accountability measures in place, there's limits in place, there's also the requirement to publicly, and they do publish this on their website every year, it is tabled in council every year, their audited financial statements for everyone to see. So this has been made publicly available. If you Google CBIC financial report, it'll come straight up on the page, you'll download their financial report, and that's done every year, so that anyone can see what they're investing in and what the returns have been. But in addition to that, public accountability, there's also, as I mentioned, the leverage, the leverage requirements and cash flow ratios that we place on them. So this allows them to get on with the job of doing what they do well, which is generating returns for the people of Brisbane, to allow us to invest more into parkland and green space.
Thanks very much, Chair. CBIC is a sham. It is a corporation that council flogs assets off to and then rents them back, all at a cost to ratepayers. We just heard this nice fairy tale from the Lord Mayor then about this return to ratepayers, supposed return to ratepayers, as some sort of extra money coming to Brisbane City Council from CBIC, which is a complete and utter furphy, absolute furphy. Most of those earnings that the Lord Mayor talks about that come back to council, actually, in fact, more, are from properties that council rents off CBIC. So we own this company, 100% of this company. The Lord Mayor is now divesting further oversight of elected representatives, albeit only LMP ones and E and C, further divesting that to this board of CBIC, to a company that council, the ratepayers of Brisbane, own 100% of. So, and some of the buildings that council now pays rent on were previously owned by CBIC. So when you tally up all that rent that council is paying for buildings that are either owned by ratepayers themselves or were formerly owned by them before CBIC made the decision to sell them, to flog them off, that exceeds the amount that council gets back in dividends. And that's a, that's a fact that you can read about in those annual reports the Lord Mayor just mentioned. So council receives now $15 million or so dividend each year, and that's been the case, that was the case last year and the case this year. They used to, they used to talk about the number, because it used to be $20 million. But that quietly got cut back to $15 million last year and this year, and that was confirmed by councillor Davies in the budget information sessions, that the amount that came into that so-called green fund that the Lord Mayor spruiked is $15 million and $15 million only. The amount that council paid CBIC in rent on six properties was $15.5 million. So we used to own those properties, council used to not pay any rent on those properties whatsoever. Now paying $15.5 million in rent to a company we own, and then getting just $15 million back. So what happened to the other $500,000, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair? Another, and on top of that, Chair, another $6.1 million was paid out in rent on two properties that CBIC sold, and then kept the proceeds of that. That didn't go back to the ratepayers, that didn't go back into a green fund to invest in the suburbs. CBIC kept that money locked away, while council continues to pay rent on now those private properties, and continues to pay rent on publicly owned properties, only to get some of it back, some of it back. So this is just a sham, and the Lord Mayor likes to use it to claim that he is getting some sort of return on behalf of the owners of this company, which are the ratepayers of Brisbane, but we are not. At the moment, Brisbane is an example. At the moment, Brisbane is in a housing affordability crisis, and yet this LMP administration crows about these hundreds of millions of dollars held in CBIC, which invests in things like self-storage units in Sydney and a luxury apartment tower in Tewong. So, Chair, I think that says an awful lot about the values of each and every one of those LMP councillors that sit on that side of the chamber. What is the point of this money merry-go-round when we could do so much more with that money, which is all public money? How does that help the people of Brisbane when we are paying more in rent than we're getting back in a dividend? Where is all that money going, Lord Mayor? A legitimate question on behalf of the ratepayers of Brisbane. What is it really all for?
Thank you. Further speakers on G? Any further speakers on G? Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly just on item G. As the Lord Mayor said, CBIC benefit, sorry, as the Lord Mayor said, from the annual dividends from CBIC, we are investing in our parks and our green spaces, across our city and across our suburbs. CBIC operates under an independent board, with the board responsible for investment decisions for project proposals, operating within the financial parameter limits on debt and funds from operations which have been determined by council. The CBIC team has worked tirelessly to maximise the value of council's property portfolio, and ensures that land is managed with the benefit of its ultimate owners in mind, and that is the people of Brisbane. We all share in the success of this fund, and if it was up to the Labour Party, it wouldn't exist. This fund helps build and enhance the great outdoors and our lifestyle, which Brisbane is well-known. The item seeks just further approval for a variation to the conditions relating to CBIC's commercial loan. It's proposed to remove the need for CBIC investment decisions greater than $5 million to be subject to E and C review and concurrence. This will provide a clear separation of governance and decision-making. It's best practice for E and C not to be involved in the individual project investment decisions. Further, it allows CBIC more agility to pursue further future opportunities, improving their speed to execute potential transactions in the current very competitive market. This is about prudent governance, but I would expect the Labour Party to not understand that. It is appropriate governance for E and C not to be involved in the individual project investment decisions, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item G, the CBIC changes to financing approval. And fascinating, pre-prepared speech. Just a couple of, couple of issues that I just need to put on the record, raised by the Lord Mayor and the finance chairman, which concern me just a smidge. The first, the first is the finance chair's assertion that this is an independent board. Now, let me be clear, she says that, she says that, but then the whole purpose of what we're doing here today is to remove E and C and senior executives of councils controlling influence over the investment decision-making of the CBIC. Now, that does not indicate that there is an independent board. Now, that does not indicate that there is an independent board, that indicates that the board has been subject to controls of the political entity of Brisbane City Council called E and C. That is not an independent board. Now, I think actually councillor Cunningham was probably right to say that it is best practice that it's an independent board, but to stand up and claim it's already independent is absolutely false, absolutely false. And the really interesting part of all of this is I'm fascinated by how this discussion originated, and there's no advice from the Finance Chair. Did Bruce MacIver come running up to the Lord Mayor, that well-known independent person? Did he come running up to the Lord Mayor and go, mate, your dead hand's slowing us down, you've got to get off the CBIC board, we can do so much more if you weren't slowing us down? Is that how it worked? Or did Jeff Rogers come along, Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, you're slowing us down, we need, we need to get rid of you, we can make decisions without you? Is that what happened? How's E and C been delaying the processes? That's what I'd like to know, because essentially, the executive members of the CBIC have come to council and said, council, you're in our way. Now, that's problematic on a whole range of, a whole range of reasons. One, what do they want to do without any oversight? So that, that's in the back of my mind. Two, what laziness was going on in E and C that these people felt that the process that was in place, set up by this Lord Mayor and the LMP, what laziness was going on that they could not get the decisions through E and C and actually done so that they get on and do their job? Either way, there is a problem with what's been going on with the CBIC and E and C behind the scenes. So when the Lord Mayor stands up and says they're doing a fantastic job, there's nothing Bruce MacIver does that's fantastic, in my view. And there is a real problem with the composition of this board, there is a real problem in the way in which the CBIC operates, and certainly I don't support where they're going. Now, the second issue of real concern, and this, this is almost bigger than the governance issue that councillor Cunningham didn't understand, the Lord Mayor does not understand fundamentally the value of investing in the CBIC. So let's take his figures. About a hundred and thirty-five million dollars was invested when the CBC was set up, that was money given from council to the CBIC, so it was council seed funding. The Lord Mayor has indicated there's about three hundred and fifteen million dollars now under assets, and he's really proud of how strongly they've grown and how well they've done. But guess what's happened to the dividend? It's gone backwards. It was twenty million dollars a year, and for the last couple of years, it's been fifteen million dollars. So under the Lord Mayor's financing plan, the CBIC is investing more and making more money than ever, it's pretty much more than doubled its size, but it's providing less dividends back to the people of Brisbane, less dividends. The dividend hasn't doubled or more than doubled in line with the increase in assets and, and revenue that's being generated. I mean, even if it had gone up a little bit, that'd be better, I mean, you know, the, the return on investment, you know, doesn't double as your, your market value doubles. But certainly, there is a real problem when the, the revenue streams and the capital under investment more than doubles inside and the return to the shareholders, the people of Brisbane, goes down. That's what's happening under the CBIC. So the Lord Mayor might stand up and say, yay, we're investing in green space in the city, but this Lord Mayor is investing less and less. The CBIC is getting more and more and doing less with it in terms of return to the people of Brisbane. And councillor Cassidy is absolutely spot on, the vast majority of revenue is funding from council to the CBIC. There are absolute rivers of council funding flowing to the CBIC that is propping them up. Absolutely. Not only that, one of the assets they sold last year was the Yorong Pili Business Centre. So they, you know what the CBIC, they fattened it up for the market too. So we were paying top market dollar for the space in that building, which was never, ever fully rented. They took all the council officers out of Yorong Pili and they put them into Yorong Pili, fattened it up, and then they sold it off. So now council's stuck paying huge market rates in a building we don't even get any return from.
And it floods.
And it floods, and it floods, and it floods, without question. So look, far from being some sort of great financial body, let's be clear, if any investment came to you and said, yep, we're starting with a hundred and thirty million, yep, we've got three hundred and fifteen million now, and your return, your dividend went down, that's a bad investment outcome. And the fact that the Lord Mayor and the Finance Chair can't recognize that is really problematic for the city. Where's the money going? Where's Bruce MacIver and Jeff Rogers and all the mates on the CBIC panel? Where is the money going? Why is this council and E and C as the shareholder, why are they accepting smaller dividends than ever before whilst more and more money is being given to the CBIC through the leases and the property deals that council's been supporting behind the scenes? So just to be clear, I don't think a company that's more than doubled in size but is returning less is doing a good job, Lord Mayor. I think you described it as a fantastic job, and they're investing more and more, fantastic job in investing more and more than ever before. So where are the dividends, Lord Mayor? Why are we getting less and less in return for the ratepayers of Brisbane?
Thank you. Further speakers on G? Any further speakers on G? Lord Mayor?
Thank you. We've heard some real interesting claims about the CBIC, none of which are actually based in reality, but interesting nonetheless. First of all, we heard councillor Cassidy suggest that, that it's somehow inappropriate of council to, to rent a building off CBIC, particularly when CBIC built that building.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
A claim to be misrepresented.
Okay, noted.
And so what we see here is a situation where we have rightly got, had assets built for us by CBIC. They invested the money upfront to build those assets, and, and it might be the Winham Library, for example, and the Woolworth Store, that generates a great, well, councillor Cumming's not here, he's busy filling out his LMP membership form as we speak, and you know what, we're, we're even happy to waive the membership fee just for him. But Winham Library, which also is co-located with a Woolworth supermarket, which provides a great service to the people of Winham, is a great example where, yes, we are a tenant in the building, but Woolworth is paying rent to CBIC, and so it's a partnership there. And so there's income being generated by people other than council, and we heard the suggestion that this is somehow just council renting from CBIC, and that's, that's where the money comes from. Well, if you actually read the financial reports of CBIC, councillor Cassidy, you would see that CBIC owns property and assets in New South Wales, Victoria, WA, and in fact, one of the fantastic assets, one of the fantastic assets that CBIC owns has a tenant of the Australian Tax Office. Now, that is something that makes me feel, you know, the chest fills with pride, that we're getting something out of the tax office here, and so...
Councillor Johnston, please.
The tax office is renting in one of CBIC's assets in New South Wales. Is that somehow a money, a merry-go-round or a money-go-round, councillor Cassidy? I'm quite happy that CBIC is getting rent from the Australian Tax Office, I think that is great. And that's just one example of many where they have a range of different tenants, and they are creating high-quality product, high-quality assets, and continuing to invest. And they're also continuing to choose the optimum time when an asset is either best held on its books or an asset is released to the market so that they can then reinvest in other assets. Now, Labor wants you to believe that they would do things in a different way. And they, they did, they did, because as I stand here and I look out the window at that building that's next to us, I, I remember the way that they used to do things, because all of the council staff would previously work in a building called the Brisbane Administration Centre. Now, that was under Labor. It's called the BAC, it's now the Telstra Building. Now, the BAC was getting a bit, I guess, old and rundown and tired, and, and towards the end of its, I guess, the first stage of its life. And so Lord Mayor Jim Sawley at the time decided he would do an excellent, an excellent Labor deal. And so he sold the building to a property developer. Now, what the property developer did was then quickly built a second building on the same site, because unfortunately, Lord Mayor Jim hadn't worked out that you could build two buildings on the one side, sold the building for thirty-five million dollars at the time, and then immediately, a new building was built on the site, generating something like a sixty million dollar profit for the developer who's the new owner. And we can see that building right in front of us here. And then what did they do? Did they use that thirty-five million that they got ripped off on and buy a new building and go into there? No, they rented, they rented, and they didn't rent from an organization like CBIC or even QIC, they rented from a private company. And they decided on the genius idea of going into Brisbane Square. And guess what the private company that owns Brisbane Square said? Yeah, we'll give you a lease, but you have to spend thirty million dollars on the fit-out of the building. So sold this building for thirty-five million, the developer then put a second building in and made sixty million dollars profit, and then they paid thirty million dollars to fit out a rented building for a private owner. So yes, Labor does do things differently, they really do, and heaven forbid that they ever get back in charge of this council, because that's the different that we don't want to see. It's not good different, it's bad different, and so...
It's not good different.
I do have, though, a response to, to councillor Johnston and her question about the dividend. Oh, what a shock. You know what, she's not even here to listen to me, she's not even here to participate in the debate, it's an outrage, she should be here. So the dividend, as I've suggested, will go into providing new parks and green space, that will be the continuing case, but the dividend has been set in a way that allows the fund to grow year on year. The dividend at twenty million dollars a year was at the point where it was restricting the ability of the fund to grow in the future. We want that fund to grow because a, a small reduction in dividend now, in the scheme of things, will generate massive returns on an ongoing basis to the ratepayers of the future. Now, if I was being short-sighted, I'd say, I want more money now, I want, I want bigger dividends now, but by taking a long-term view and a slight adjustment in the dividend, we will see much bigger benefits to the ratepayers down the track because the fund will grow in size. Profits that are made are reinvested into buying new assets, investing in new assets, and they will generate more and more returns down the track. So we will see much bigger dividends in the future as a result of this adjustment in the dividends right now, and that is the responsible thing to do. If we're thinking based on, I guess, a political approach here, like I said, you know, you would see Labor wanting the money right now, that's what you would see, but we understand that the fund reinvesting into itself means it will grow faster and it will grow bigger for the long term, which will benefit future administrations, so that if, if at any stage we see a Labor Greens Council in place in the future, you know, if there's eventually a change in, in the administration of this place and the, and the Labor Party gets in, and we see Lord Mayor Jared Cassidy, Deputy Mayor Jonathan Shree, they will have this big investment fund, and they will have this interesting decision to make. They will have an interesting decision to make at that time. Does anyone guess what they will make?
Spend it.
Spend it? I don't know, I don't know. I think, I think they will see the sense in continuing to support and keep CBIC, because they'll see you can get a one-off sugar hit or you can get returns every year, dividend returned every year, and that is worth its weight in gold. So I do support and commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We now move to the vote on item G, the CBIC financing approval. All in favor? Sorry, councillor Cassidy, point, your, point of misrepresentation, my apologies.
Thanks, Chair. The Lord Mayor said that I said it was inappropriate for council to rent off a council-owned corporation, CBIC. I didn't say it was inappropriate, it's just very stupid.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on item G. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
The division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Ring the bells. The division is on item G. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No abstentions. Thank you, Clouse.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favor and five against.
Clear that carry, thank you. We now move on to item H. Item H, Lord Mayor.
Item H is an update to AP 209, council's election period policy. This policy outlines the restrictions applying to all councillors, councillor-advisors, and council officers in the period leading up to a council election. And we update this policy following every election, and so it gets updated in every election cycle, and this is the latest update of the policy, which will see us through to the next election and beyond. What we see here is a number of changes that include legislative changes that have been introduced since the last election policy review, in particular as a result of changes to the Local Government Electoral Act and Other Legislation Amendment Act 2019. During the election period in 2020, the CEO wrote to councillors about this policy and the state legislative changes which impacted on other legislation, including the City of Brisbane Act and the regulation. This update formalizes these changes well in advance of the next election period for all councillors to familiarize themselves with. The intention of the policy is to provide guidance and assistance in understanding the legislative requirements and restrictions applicable during the election period to ensure that council is consistent in its approach to day-to-day operations throughout this period. Amendments have been made to some definitions and parameters have been clarified around the use of discretionary funds, councillor community engagement activities, and the use of council facilities during the election period. Again, these matters are not new to councillors and were in effect prior to the last election, and they've been incorporated now as part of this updated policy. So just to confirm, the state legislation was updated just before the last election. Their legislation overrides our policy anyway, we can't have a policy that's in contravention to their legislation. So their legislation came into effect, it was in effect for the last election, we're simply updating our policy to make sure that our policy mirrors their policy. Councillors have been provided with a copy of this policy, as well as track changes that have been made to this policy as well, so they can see exactly which sections of the policy have been changed and exactly how those changes have occurred.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. This item is supposed to be about the prevention of electioneering on the ratepayers' purse in the lead-up to an election. In the definition of election material in the policy before us, it includes examples of things which are able to or intend to influence... of things which are able to or intend to influence the elector about voting. They include fact sheets or a newsletter that raises the profile of a councillor. So, they're surely, Chair, surely talking about the Living in Brisbane newsletter then? The one, the one and only that has a photo of the Lord Mayor's face on every twenty-one million of those Living in Brisbane newsletters. And we know that's no accident, of course, because this is a direction from the Lord Mayor himself and his office to the CEO to include a photo and a message of the LNP Lord Mayor on each and every one of those Living in Brisbane newsletters, which cost ratepayers six million dollars and are jammed into people's letterboxes right up to and including election day, each and every election cycle. That, that has been and will continue to, we're sure, be sent out during council's caretaker period, and it certainly was last time, and I'm sure the intention of boosting the budget for Living in Brisbane is to make sure that extra copies can be sent out in election time, which promote this LNP Lord Mayor. And we know, and residents are fast learning, that this LNP administration makes up the rules to suit themselves, whether it's in here, around the conduct of the official council meeting, or out there in the community about their self-promotion. What's missing in all of this, Chair, of course, is an advertising code of conduct, because official council documents should not be used to promote any councillor or the Lord Mayor, ones that come out of the corporate communication area that are designed and distributed by council officers sitting up in Brisbane Square. The Lord Mayor and his office should not be directing the CEO to include photos of him to make that an LNP council promotion. And if he wanted to be consistent, he and the deputy mayor often talk about things that the state government do and documents that they put out there. If they wanted to be consistent with the state and federal governments, and he often talks about this, this, this debate around the council or the administration, he's now renaming the council, the council itself after himself, and there's been a bit of, a little bit of a debate here and there over the last few weeks about that. But if he wanted to be consistent, and he thought that that's what other levels of government were doing, we would hear it called the Palais Haie Parliament, or the, or the Morrison House of Representatives. But it's not, it's not the Shriner Council, it's the Shriner administration. But, and, and he's labouring of that point, and he's labouring of making sure that he is included in all these brochures, and then there are more brochures, and a bigger budget for his self-promotion, is, is very consistent with this obsession about misusing council's resources and ratepayers' resources in, in promoting himself and his LNP administration. Lord Mayor is acting an awful lot like King Jong Un, the Supreme Leader, and after this and after the changes he's made to the meeting's local law and the election policy and all this advertising, I'm sure the next thing we'll see are big grey statues of him appearing in King George Square, where they can, or the LNP faithful can do their march past to the Supreme Leader. And the bending, the bending of these rules for their own self-promotion and feathering of their own nests, Chair, is going to come to an end. It is going to come to an end at the next election, because this Lord Mayor's time is coming to an end.
Thank you. Further speakers on H? Any further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mister Chair, I rise to speak on item H. Councillor Cassidy, through you, Mister Chair, comes in here and he has the gall to talk about photos on newsletters, when at the last count I thought there were eleven photos of him in his own newsletter. I'm just surprised, actually, surprised that councillor Cassidy would try and, and, and make that, make that statement. It just shocks me, actually. This is the policy which outlines how councillors and councillor-advisors and council officers must undertake their work in the period leading up to a council election. Legislative changes require us to update this policy, and before the 2020 election, the CEO wrote to all councillors a number of times about the policy and the legislative changes which places additional restrictions on councillors. We're incorporating these changes into the policy to make it a little bit easier, and it's done well in advance of the next election, to ensure everyone is aware of their responsibilities. The main changes include restrictions on decisions during the election period, such as significant procurement activities, such as establishing preferred supplier arrangements, making local laws, making planning schemes, approval of development variation requests or change variation approvals, a ban on new decisions to use discretionary funds from the first of January in election years. Again, as the Lord Mayor noted, these matters are not new to councillors and were in effect during the last election campaign as a result of the state election, uh, state legislation.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Right, yes, I rise to speak on item H, approval to amend the AP 209 election period policy. Firstly, I want to put on the record that I requested a briefing on this item and the following item, which I'll also speak about, to clarify a number of issues in this policy document. When the finance chair who is responsible for this policy stands up and say she wants to make sure everyone is aware of their responsibilities, clearly that's not the case, because my request to the CEO for a briefing about this policy and the change to the councillor remuneration tribunal policy was rejected. So, a simple request to have a discussion about election policy, something reasonably, you know, controversial and contested, was denied by the CEO of council. So, when councillor Cunningham stands up and says she wants everyone to be aware of their responsibilities, clearly that's untrue, because this administration refuses to have a briefing for councillors about election policy. You think if there was going to be a briefing about something, it might be about that. It's also extremely concerning to me, because the language inserted at the beginning of the document refers to the fact that council officers are supposed to be neutral. The continued neutrality of council officers. I don't think anybody in this organisation knows what that means. So, let's be clear, this policy has been prepared at the direction of the LNP, has been approved by the LNP E and C Committee, it will be passed by a majority of LNP councillors, that's not demonstrating organisational neutrality. And I say to the CEO of council and Mister Tim Wright, that when you say that this is a neutral council organisation, that is fundamentally untrue. If this was a neutral organisation that respected the participation of all councillors, regardless of their political persuasion, when councillors asked for a briefing to have questions answered, neutral council officers should be agreeable to do that. Because the only people that have had the opportunity to have their say in this document are the LNP. And when one side of politics has all the say, and the other side isn't even allowed to ask a question, that is not demonstrating organisational neutrality. That is fundamentally how corruption embeds itself in an organisation, when there is no fair and transparent oversight of major policy change. So, I actually think the CEO's refusal was quite appalling. The language in this document is not reflected by his actions. Councillor Fiona Cunningham clearly says one thing but does another, and it is of great concern that the LNP want to try and change the rules to suit themselves. Now, here's just one problem that I've identified in the document before us today, and it's a clause that councillor Cassidy spotted as well. The definition of election material has been amended specifically to say that anything that is able to or intended to influence an elector about voting an election or affect the result of an election, i.e., this is what's been added, i.e. examples include a fact sheet or newsletter that raises the profile of a councillor as outlined in a specific section. So, that's very vague. If you put out a fact sheet in your ward about a footpath upgrade or a road upgrade, and it mentions your name, is that going to be raising your profile? Goes on in this document to say that ordinary course of business, which has always been the rule, ordinary course of business materials can continue through the election period and the caretaker period, and it goes on a few pages later to say that still can happen. Guess who gets to determine what's election material? The CEO of council. It's pretty appalling, in my view, that this document is conflicting in its reference to what councillors can publish in an election period. Are newsletters okay, as it says on page, well, there's no page numbers, under dot point six, or are newsletters not okay, as it says in the definition section? That's just one example of how poorly written this document is, which has conflicting information about what's allowed and what's not allowed. Gets better. There's a whole new section in here now about social media, and there's some very interesting language that councillors must not promote their own social media channels or website via council channels, if those channels contain electioneering activity. So, I think that's a massive problem for the LNP. They're cross-promoting all the time on their social media channels, which is funded, supported, and resourced by council officers. That's not supposed to be happening under this policy. So, let's be clear, all of the social media channels at Brisbane City Council, they get retweeted, all of the material that comes out from the Lord Mayor and councillor Adams, through all the official council channel responses, that's all going to have to stop. Are they aware of what they're doing? Doesn't impact on me, I have a Instagram account and a Facebook account and a Twitter account, and I manage them myself, we don't use any council funding to advertise or to support them financially in any way. So, it's no problem for me, but the problem will be for the LNP because of the way that they have set up their social media and the way that it is centrally controlled by LNP staff members who are council officers. And this policy is very clear that it applies to council entities. So, I think there are really big problems with what the LNP have done here, and a little bit of consultation in advance of this coming here might have worked out some of these bugs prior to pushing it through. Now, I know how this LNP thinks, they think that there'll be no problems, that the CEO will clean up any mess after the election after them. Well, that's just not the case anymore, because now this is a policy, everything that the LNP does in contravention of these policies goes to the OIA. It is, I think, massively problematic that the LNP has rushed through these changes without any consultation, without any discussion with anybody else other than themselves, and of course, their laziness in policy development will come back and it will hurt them the most.
Thank you. Any further speakers on item H? Councillor Adams.
Just briefly, Mister Chair, I would just like to deeply apologise to the council officers that were named and shamed by councillor Johnston, not that they should be ashamed, but the emotive that was imputed on them was absolutely disgraceful, they do an amazing job. The track changes were very...
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
She named officers and said they were biased and basically corrupt with the LNP. The track changes are very clearly...
Point of order to you, councillor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Interestingly, to hear that debate on point of order, the track changes were extremely clear. There didn't need to be a presentation on this, because the track changes were clear and simple.
Thank you. Your point of misrepresentation, councillor Johnston.
Yes, on the first point of order, councillor Adams claimed I named and shamed council officers. I simply pointed out that I requested a briefing on this matter, and the CEO of council refused to undertake that briefing. On the second point of order, councillor Adams said that I had alleged that there was some corruption with the LNP. What I said was, the lack of consultation around these matters is how corruption starts.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on item H. The vote is on item H. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Not seconded. We move on to item I. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I stand to give the item I, the approval to amend AP 216, councillor remuneration policy and delegate powers. As this is now a very established process, council forms an independent councillor remuneration tribunal, totally...
Uh, point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I seek the following further information with respect to item, sorry, I, the councillor remuneration policy and delegate powers. The Lord Mayor's not here, so I presume the deputy mayor is addressing this item. But the report before us today does not say whether the terms of the existing tribunal members are going to be extended or renewed, it does not give any indication about how their current appointment is being treated under this item, and we need to have some clarity around how the members of this tribunal are going to function, given it's not referenced in the report before us today.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Councillor Adams, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. As I was saying, the independent councillor remuneration tribunal decides matters relating to councillor pay. And as a part of the minor amendments to the policy that we have here before us, the tribunal is proposed to convene every four years. Previously, the tribunal was convened every five years, except for out-of-session reviews. The tribunal will now be convened in consultation with the Lord Mayor and the leader of the opposition, to have a totally independent, as we always do, remuneration tribunal, to provide a report next year in line with the established schedule. By establishing the independent tribunal, we avoid a situation where councillors set their own pay. So, previous to this submission, it's very important that they hear the change here, because I'm sure we're going to hear hyperbole and disgraceful comments again, as we've heard all night, but they don't bother to listen about the content, they'd rather just smear and move on. It is very important to realise that the, establishing the independent tribunal was about avoiding where councillors actually set their own pay. And previous to this submission, the establishment of the independent tribunal was delegated to civic cabinet. Not appropriate that civic cabinet also gets to have comments on what the pay is. The reality is, this submission sees the delegation move to the CEO, further removing the involvement of any elected councillors in the outcome of the independent remuneration tribunal. The members, as I said, will be appointed by the delegate in consultation with the Lord Mayor and the leader of the opposition of the day. The delegate's power is limited by having to accept the recommendation of the tribunal and implement it without amendment. There are also some delegations contained within this submission regarding the settlement of legal proceedings and planning compensation matters, which will ensure council's interests are protected. I think it goes without saying that anyone with reasonable understanding of what we have seen through the changes to the City of Brisbane Act, through the OIA, through the CCC and everything, there is no acceptable way that councillors should have any say in their remuneration. These amendments reflect, reflect this, again, clearly track changed, and I'll leave the debate to the chambers.
Thank you. Further debate on item I? Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item I, the amendments to the councillor remuneration policy and delegate powers. Let me be clear, it was a very simple question about the current term of the members of the tribunal, and councillor Adams just simply couldn't answer it. I presume in reading this that the outcome will be that the CEO of council will decide who's going to go on this remuneration tribunal. Now, that's not how it works at the state or federal level of government. So, this council thinks it's so special that it should ignore the practice of the other two levels of government and do what it thinks is the right thing to do here. The Lord Mayor appoints people to every single board out there, and now suddenly, for some reason, he wants the CEO to do it. Guess who the only person, the CEO of Brisbane City Council is responsible to under the City of Brisbane Act? The Lord Mayor. The CEO acts at the direction of the Lord Mayor. The CEO acts at the direction of the Lord Mayor. So what this is doing is entrenching more power in the Lord Mayor and the CEO through the governance structure of the City of Brisbane Act. This is wrong. Now, I have, ever since I've been independent, opposed all of the delegations. Here we're seeing more delegations to push what should be transparent decisions off to the CEO of council. Now, we also hear from councillor Adams that somehow the leader of the opposition's going to be consulted about whatever it is that's going on, but myself and councillor Sri, who represents the Greens, they don't get any discussion in this. So Labour and Liberal are just joining together, basically, to strike a deal between themselves. How is that good policy? So when it comes to determining public salaries for Brisbane city councillors, the LNP is pushing through the following changes. One, delegating the responsibility to the CEO, who is responsible directly to the Lord Mayor of this city and acts at his direction. And two, will be undertaking secret deals with the ALP on the arrangements around tribunal matters. Does anybody think this is a good idea? There are state and federal bodies that this council could mirror. There are state and federal bodies that could give clear guidance on how to manage these issues, but this LNP administration is stitching up how councillor remuneration policy is decided in this council. It is absolutely disgusting and wrong. Now, I would have appreciated the opportunity to ask a few questions about this and perhaps I'd be less angry than I am now, but again, the person who's going to have all the power under this policy couldn't be bothered to spend five minutes to talk to me or some other councillor about the issues in this policy before us today. So we've got to come in here and vote, and what we're voting on is absolutely and fundamentally wrong. It is wrong that the two big parties are going to stitch up the rules between themselves, that it's going to be done in secret by the CEO of council, and it undermines the accountability and transparency of this council. I don't support these changes, and what Brisbane City Council is doing here today is fundamentally wrong.
Thank you. Further debate on item I? Oh, councillor Landers?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I actually move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Second it.
Thank you. A motion before is for a dinner adjournment, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Dinner adjournment is for one hour after the doors have been locked. Thank you, councillors. We're in item I. Item I, any further debate on item I? No? Thank you. We'll now put that to the vote. All in favour of item I, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division?
No seconded. Councillors, we now move on to item J. Item J, Lord Mayor?
Thank you. Item J is approval for travel to attend, as an IOC observer, the Winter Beijing Games for 2022. These games are obviously happening early next year, and any approval for travel ideally needs to happen before that occurs, so this is coming through. This submission will support the deputy mayor travelling in her role as chair of the Olympics portfolio to the 2022 Winter Olympics in Beijing. She will be joined by the deputy premier, Stephen Miles, to this visit. And this is part of the important responsibility that we have as a host city in partners with the state government to make sure that we are taking these technical missions to learn from the experience of other cities. And in this particular case, just to confirm what will happen, there will be discussions about Tokyo and learnings from Tokyo. There will be also discussions with other host cities that are upcoming, including Paris and including Los Angeles. There will be discussions on a whole range of issues, including sustainability, what each city is doing to improve the sustainability of the games, on issues like medical and health services, technology, transport, bus fleet operations, signage, wayfinding and spectator experience. All of this is going to be part of the discussions that will be had. Now, the deputy mayor is not going to Beijing to watch sport. She should be so lucky. That's not going to be part of it. This is very much a work trip, and she'll be working with both council and state officials to make sure that we glean as much as possible of use so that we can continue to plan and gear up for hosting an amazing event in 2032. This is something, this trip is something that has been welcomed by AOC president John Coates. And as I mentioned, councillor Adams will be travelling with Stephen Miles as well as state officials in this process. The deputy mayor is scheduled to leave Australia in late January next year, and she may or may not be back depending on the availability of flights, but we'll see. There's not a lot of flights at the moment, so that's been the biggest challenge. And obviously, that's something that's impacted on the cost of this trip as well. The reality is, at the moment, air fares are much more expensive than they normally would be in pre-COVID times because of the situation that we're in. We're in the middle of a pandemic. The number of flights and the routes that would previously operate are not operating at the moment. So obviously, that's been a factor in terms of the cost of this visit, but this visit is absolutely essential, and I absolutely support the deputy mayor joining with the deputy premier on this visit.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item J of the ENC report on the attendance of the Beijing 2022 Winter Olympic and Paralympic Games Future Host Observer Programme. I start by saying to councillor Adams, you have my sympathy for all the hard work involved in this trip. Yes, as the organiser for the 2032 Olympics, Olympic Games, we are starting from the scratch, and there are so many things we need to learn to make sure we can deliver the Olympics that will put Brisbane on the world stage and leave a long-lasting legacy that will benefit generations of residents to come. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Adams for taking on such an honourous task, and I hope you will have a safe and fruitful trip and bring back the much-needed information and experiences for Brisbane 2032.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on item J, councillor Adams' attendance at the Beijing Winter Olympics and Paralympics. I don't agree with councillor Wong. I really don't see this as an onerous task, and I certainly don't see it as necessary. Any discussions that need to be had about any logistics relating to the Olympics certainly can be done remotely. That would be prudent in both the political atmosphere and also in the current global pandemic, and also economically for this city. It is councillor Adams that seems to get all the junkets, and that's been the way over many years, although there hasn't been any travel last year, but generally, it's councillor Adams that goes on these junkets. I remember the junket to go and look at the ferry lights in China, I think that was too, maybe or Hong Kong, a few years ago. So I don't think spending almost $20,000 in it, no doubt will be $20,000 by the time all the extra costs are added on, is a wise investment of council funds. It's certainly not necessary. She's not required. The papers just demonstrate what's fundamentally wrong with this council. It says she is required to travel to Beijing. She's not required to travel to Beijing. This is just a junket. We're in an environment where there is some concern about the diplomatic issues of the Olympic Games in China. I don't know what the Australian government's position is, but I know the US government has announced a particular position on the matter, and certainly, I just don't think that Brisbane City Council needs to have councillor Adams there. I don't think it will add anything to the process of running the Olympics. I don't believe it's value for money or a good use of ratepayers' funds to pay for this trip. And I just think that this council is out of touch when it comes to thinking about what needs to be done. So the explanation that we heard from the Lord Mayor is councillor Adams has to go over there to talk about buses and signage. I mean, there are things that can be done from here, and I don't know, is councillor Adams going to come back? And is the metro going to change? They can't even call it a bus system, but is the metro going to change if somebody over there says, well, we don't think your metro routes are right, or we don't think your bus routes are right? Of course not. So this is just an absolute junket, and I'm sorry, we've heard it all before from people who go over to the Olympic Games, we're not really going to watch any sport. Well, that's not what happens. We know they do go and watch the sport. We've heard John Coates in this very chamber and on TV publicly chastising politicians who won't go and watch the sport. So it's just not, it's not a reasonable thing to say. So without councillor Adams going on this junket to China, will the Brisbane Olympics in 2032 rise or fall? No, they won't. This is not good value for money. Councillor Adams should not be going. There is a global pandemic, there are geopolitical issues and diplomatic issues, and this is absolutely something that should not be on the agenda. I don't support this.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you very much. Yeah, there are some serious issues around the diplomatic relations between Australia and the People's Republic of China that emerged, I think, just today or yesterday with the US government announcing a potential boycott of the Winter Olympics Games and the Morrison government or parliament or whatever this administration would refer to them as have indicated, they're looking at a similar boycott. So I don't know, perhaps this is a bit premature to be discussing this item for the deputy mayor to be off to the Winter Olympics. I'm not sure what advice the administration has received from DFAT or from the Foreign Minister about this issue, but I'm sure that the deputy mayor will be among friends when she travels over to Beijing. Of course, this is where the Shrinna administration tried to send all that PPE equipment at the height of the pandemic, without giving our bus drivers and our frontline workers appropriate PPE. This is, of course, where our electric buses are being made at the moment. Maybe perhaps the deputy mayor will be bringing back some signed contracts for electric buses made in China, or perhaps checking out some of those cheap Chinese carbon credits that this administration uses to offset our carbon emissions here in Brisbane City Council and somehow claiming that we are carbon neutral. But however, those things might occur over there, but that's if the deputy mayor gets to go at all, if the Morrison government follows the lead of the American government, the Biden administration, in a boycott of these games. So it'll be very, very interesting to see. The deputy mayor isn't required, as councillor Johnson points out, isn't required by anyone to go. She chairs a committee here in council that's created by the Lord Mayor. It's not an official Olympic committee in any way. The councillor for Holland Park is the deputy mayor of the city, so doesn't have a position by virtue of that position on Bocog. And we've seen the Lord Mayor in his second position, that he could nominate for Bocog, that's been awarded to the mayor of the Redlands, who missed out, I'm not sure how narrowly, in an LNP pre-selection for the seat of Bowman, I believe. I think third, so didn't come close in that, but obviously is a political friend of the Lord Mayor, coming from that part of Brisbane, very close by, and obviously a member of the LNP, as we've recently found out. So there's no requirement whatsoever for council to be sending the deputy mayor of this city over to the Winter Olympics. There is doubt now, there is doubt now that this mission will even go ahead, given the posturing that we're seeing at the moment, so perhaps this is all very premature, Chair.
Division?
No seconded. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Councillor Adams, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted.
Second it.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 30 November, 2021, be adopted. Councillor Adams, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston?
Just to let you know, I've got to step out of the chamber, but I don't believe you'll have a quorum, so I think you might need to address that.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Yes, we don't have a quorum. Thank you, councillors. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
No further speakers? Thank you. We now put the report to the vote. All in favour of this report, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Transport report. Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted.
Second it.
It's been moved by councillor Owen and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted. Councillor Owen?
Thank you. Just briefly, Mr. Chair, for our final committee meeting for the year, officers from transport for Brisbane detailed a very interesting review of the timetable as part of the ferry network review. I know that councillor Murphy has spoken at length about the improvements that we're putting through on the ferry network in this place last week, so I'll keep my comments very brief today. But most importantly, the ferry network is delivering more for all types of travellers with an additional investment of $2.6 million per year, funded entirely by council. Now, commuters will benefit from an extra 59 all-stop CityCat services during the working week, as well as simplified and enhanced Eastern and Western Express CityCat trips. For those wanting to make the most of our city's dining, nightlife and leisure opportunities, they will be able to catch a CityCat or a ferry home later into the night. If the weather is in our favour over the next week, we'll also be seeing where we're going with the new Howard Smith Wools terminal. Hopefully, that will be the week of the 20th of December, and I know that councillor Howard is looking forward to that, just in time for the Christmas party season. And from this day, you'll be able to catch a Cityhopper or Cross River service to reach the Howard Smith Wools. So the new network and timetable is coming into effect from next Monday, the 13th of December. The new information on the timetable is already uploaded onto TransLink's website, so- The new information on the timetable is already uploaded onto TransLink's website, so people can start planning their trips. Now, as it is the last council meeting for the year, I'd like to take this opportunity, on behalf of the Transport Committee, to say a very big thank you to the dedicated teams in both the Brisbane Infrastructure and the Transport for Brisbane divisions. From starting major infrastructure construction on the Brisbane Metro, finalising designs on the green bridges, expanding e-mobility and reviewing the entire ferry network and plenty in between, so much has been achieved in 2021. And we are lucky to have such hard-working council employees who share the Shriner Council's passion for making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. Mr. Chair, there's only a few weeks left of 2021, but the Shriner Council still has so much planned with what will be a summer of better transport for Brisbane. Last Wednesday, we got underway with a new suite of e-mobility trials. From the 1st of December, we commenced a six-month safety trial, where e-scooters are locked from midnight until 5:00 AM throughout the CBD and Fortitude Valley on Fridays and Saturdays. On the same day, we also launched a new six-month trial of e-scooters in the bayside suburbs of Winham, Manly, Sandgate and Shauncliffe. There are now 200 e-scooters in the Winham-Manly area and 150 in the Sandgate-Shauncliffe area. Mr. Chair, our first weekend of free festive fairs starts this Friday, meaning that bus travel on Brisbane's 1,200 buses will be free right across the city from Friday the 10th to Sunday the 12th of December, and again from Friday the 17th through to Sunday the 19th of December. This is a gift from us to the residents of Brisbane after a very tough year, and we trust that this will help more people to enjoy the many Christmas events that are taking place right across the city and also offer further support to the many local businesses here in Brisbane. Mr. Chair, under the leadership of the Shriner Council, transport in Brisbane has only gotten better in 2021, and we look forward to continuing to deliver a better connected city in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
You're lucky I'm making a point today, or there's still be no quorum in here. I rise to speak on the ferry review. Far from being useful, the ferry review has really let communities down. I know my residents contributed to the ferry network review, but this administration ignored all of the feedback put in by my residents. And it is extremely disappointing that council continues to refuse to look at options to extend ferries or CityCats further upstream. The reasons that are given are all easily overcomable, easily overcome, with a little bit of investment and/or environmental management. There is no question that residents in my area would absolutely flock to using the CityCat, particularly to get to the University of Queensland and other locations in the western reaches of the Brisbane River. And it is extremely disappointing that this administration fails to invest in an extension of CityCat services. It's also quite notable, of course, that the CityCat services that have been cut have not been restored. And it is, I think, somewhat disappointing that this ferry network review has failed to actually expand ferry and CityCat services for residents, particularly in the western suburbs of Brisbane. That's extremely disappointing. And hopefully, one day, when the LMP are long gone from this place, our future administration in this council will invest in an extension of CityCat services. It was the first mode of transport in the city. The river is such a great connection to so many parts of our city. It would absolutely reduce congestion, give people better public transport options, and I strongly support the extension of CityCat services upriver.
Councillor Owen, no? Thank you. We now move this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The report presented to the committee last week was a presentation on the works that this council did as part of the Lindem open level crossing upgrades. This is a tripartite effort between Brisbane City Council, the state government, both DTMR and QR, and the federal government, who funded the works to ensure that this crossing was improved and made safe. Once again, the works included, for those who don't know this intersection, it is an open level crossing immediately adjacent to Lindem Rail Station, Kayanawa Road, North Road, and not far from Iona Catholic High School, all in this district. There was a tragic event with one motorist who challenged the red lights and a down crossbeam at the crossing, who did lose her life attempting to cross at this intersection. Council has been working very closely with Queensland Rail to make it very, very difficult for an individual to perform that act again. That has been the fundamental principle, to make this intersection safe. We engaged in approximately April this year. The works were completed in what's called a SCAS, a Scheduled Rail Closure, to make sure that it could be done. We were very blessed, because before, in the days leading up to the weekend, there was scheduled some months in advance. So for further information, council must schedule its works in with the scheduled closures, track closures and track maintenance by QR. If not, the cost grows massively. We did that. We were concerned that the weather would change and stay particularly rainy, and we wouldn't be able to get the bitumen to set. That wasn't the case. We had remarkably good weather just for the period we needed. It was delivered in the timeframe that we wanted. It's an important example, again, of what council can do when we deal with a cooperative QR and a cooperative federal government. It speaks to some of the ideas I was noting in some of the debate last week, that this council is focused on and committed to action to materially benefit the motorists and the people of Brisbane City. Not a study, genuine work, to improve the safety and wellbeing of our citizens. So can I commend all the officers who did a great deal of planning to prepare for this particular work? Again, I say it again, an example of what can be done when we're committed to material action. And I think that that's really important. There were a number of petitions, there were three petitions, one for you, Mr. Chair, and then two on a matter around Ipswich Road. I look forward to comments from others.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
I rise to speak on item A and item C, and I assert item C is taken seriously out of voting purposes. Firstly, with respect to item A, I look forward to councillor Adaman standing up and criticizing councillor Wines for supporting this project at the Lindem round crossing, because I know councillor Adaman is very passionate about safety around railway infrastructure. He spoke in this chamber just a few weeks ago, talking about how any road safety improvements near rail stations are a state government responsibility and should be done by the state government. And he was very critical of the motion that I brought forward to put a safe crossing point in on a council road at Annelie, and he voted against it again today. So I'm fascinated by the hypocrisy and the double standards of councillor Wines and councillor Adaman, who stand up and say how wonderful it is that council's working on pedestrian safety around a rail station. And that's perfectly okay when they want to do it, you know? But it's not okay when it's suggested by a councillor who's not a member of their team. It's not okay when a blind Paralympian says she was nearly hit by a car on a crossing. That's not okay. We're going to ignore her, but it's perfectly okay, because we want to work cooperatively with the state government and we want to deliver pedestrian safety improvements around this rail crossing. Well, that's clearly a double standard from Brisbane City Council, particularly councillor Wines, who's repeatedly voted against improving the crossing near Dutton Park Station. And even worse, he, or the Lord Mayor, sent councillor Adaman out a few weeks ago to basically claim that the state should be fixing up pedestrian safety on council roads. And here he is, here they are today, bending over backwards to work with the state government and undertake pedestrian safety improvements around a rail station. Well, the hypocrisy and the double standards of this LMP administration have been noted and will be communicated very clearly to my constituents. Item C. Again, I mean, you know, they're just words, they don't mean anything to these people. We've got thousands of children crossing Ipswich Road at the corner of Cracknell Road and Longaville Street in Annelie. One side of the street is in Maruka Ward now, and the other side of the street is in Tennyson Ward. But both sides of Ipswich Road are actually in the Yorongas State School catchment. So we have hundreds of children who every day are actively travelling to school, they're part of our active school travel programme. And when council announced, after years of pressure, that it would reduce the speed limit on part of Ipswich Road, they stopped at Cracknell Road instead of continuing for another block down to the next set of lights, where we have about over 1,000 children, I think it's almost 1,700, crossing every day at Cracknell Road intersection and over 1,000 crossing at the Longaville intersection. So it's incredibly disappointing that yet again, this LMP administration is refusing to consider lowering the speed limit to enhance pedestrian safety. Now, again, it's so fascinating, because this is the one road in my ward where everybody wants a speed limit reduction. It's the only place council, well, it's not the only place, but it's a place where council won't even consider it. It was forced on Corinda without any consultation with the wider community. No one there requested speed limit reductions, but the former Lord Mayor in his wisdom decided he was going to force the speed limit change, not from 60 to 50, but 60 to 40. And yet, where genuine pedestrian safety issues have been raised here in Annelie, this LMP administration again ignores those concerns. It is incredibly disappointing. I know councillor Griffith will be disappointing. So the heckling from councillor Hutton, who, to be fair, is pretty new at this. Most of your people are missing, including your Lord Mayor, your deputy mayor and about half a dozen of your colleagues. So when you can't make a quorum up, I think heckling and drawing attention to the fact that your people are missing, probably not such a good idea. And if I and the Labor councillors walked out, there would not be a quorum. So I don't know if that was quite the heckling that I want.
Back to the item, councillor Johnston.
So I know that councillor Griffith is concerned about this too. We have parents speak to us every day who live in our wards. The speed limit should be reduced here to enhance pedestrian safety, and I do not support council's do-nothing response. My fear is, with all of these intersections along Annelie Road that are unsafe, many of them uncontrolled, that more people will die. I mean, councillor Wines hopped up tonight, it's terribly sad, someone died at the Lindem Crossing, two people died up at Annelie Junction, two. And then just two years ago, another person died around the corner in Venna Road. So three pedestrians have died in this part of Annelie, and yet this council has to be forced kicking and screaming. If another person dies on one of these roads in Annelie because of council inaction, there will be blood on the hands of these LMP councillors. The do-nothing response here is absolutely shameful. This council fails to support pedestrian safety. Every single day, it fails to do it. The car, the almighty car, here gets priority, and children crossing the road to get to school are coming off second best. I don't support this, and I urge all councillors to vote against.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to respond to a few comments there. There was an assertion made that this work at Lindem was made to the benefit of LNP mates. While he is a gentleman and a person who I am very fond of, the principal beneficiary were the residents of councillor Cummings' ward, not anyone in the LNP. As we've often extended the hand of friendship to councillor Cummings, he's welcome to join us at any time. But the principal beneficiaries were the residents of Winham-Manly Ward, not of an LNP constituency. That is something I think that should be recalled at this time after some of those comments. The other thing is, we went over this last week, how to get a speed limit reduced, how to get, how do you do a speed limit review? That was discussed, and we discussed at the time that certain parts of Ipswich Road had, in fact, had a speed limit reduction. There is a process, I've spoken with councillor Griffiths, he and I are looking forward to engaging meaningfully on addressing that for this reach of Ipswich Road around Yorongas Memorial Park and Bow Desert Road. We'll see what we can do. I look forward to working with him and others in that community to make sure that it continues to be a safe place to work. But as I say, last week, the purpose of last week's presentation was to make sure that councillors were properly informed about the speed limit reduction process. We'll be providing more information to councillors about how to get that process achieved, and I look forward to working with people to achieve that for their communities.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Now move to the vote on items A and B in the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour of items A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move to the vote on item C. Item C, all in favour of item C, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Cook. Thank you. Please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. The division is vote on item C in the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 13 in favour and three against.
Thank you. Declare that motion carried. Councillors, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, councillor Allen.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 30th of November, 2021, be adopted.
Second that.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 30 November, 2021, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In last week's meeting, the committee received an update on inner-city building and construction management. Construction management planning requires consideration of the impacts of major projects on pedestrian hubs and transport networks in the inner city. To put into perspective the importance of transport networks to the inner city, the Riverside Expressway, which provides the primary access to and from the city centre, accommodates approximately 130,000 vehicles per day. accommodates approximately 130,000 vehicles per day. With the highest daily pedestrian volume...
Councillor Allen, just a moment.
Just to be clear, I don't believe there's a quorum. I have to step out again. So there is absolutely a problem that needs to be addressed by the Shrinna Council.
We are now without quorum. Thank you. Please ring the bells.
Including cyclists, scooters, pedestrians. It's also the hub for major rail, busway and ferry connections between the suburban and inner city employment. We also know that access in and around the CBD is critical to the local economy and attractiveness of the city. It is evident that CBD, in the midst of many significant government and private sector construction projects, is causing quite considerable disruption. With this comes heightened heavy vehicle movements on streets, access to construction sites via crossovers, overhead crane movements, and the list continues. As a result of all this activity, council released construction management guidelines in 2020, which apply to any...
Councillor Allen, sorry. You'll need to ring the bell.
I'll just go back to that point. As a result of all this activity, council released construction management guidelines in 2020, which apply to any developments occurring in either the CBD or city frame. The committee also heard that full footpath closures are generally not permitted with hoarding and gantry installation being preferred around large sites. Mr Chair, I won't go on with the report at this point. I will finish, however, and point out that as my last committee report for the 2021 calendar year, I would like to record my thanks and appreciation for those who work behind the scenes to ensure seamless committee meetings, from the CLO and ISB offices to the teams and the presenters at each week's meeting. A big thanks to the staff...
Councillor Allen, I'm sorry. We don't have quorum in the chamber.
Point of order, Mr Chairman, someone has to raise it and no one, someone has to actually come in here and ask.
Yep. The chair is aware of it. It's been brought to my attention. Yep. Going to have to ring the bells. Okay. Thank you. councillor Allen, do you want to conclude?
So, Mr Chair, I'd just like to close, if I could, please by thanking councillors, officers. As I pointed out, as this is the last committee report for the 2021 calendar year, I'd like to record my thanks and appreciation for those who work behind the scenes to ensure seamless committee meetings. From the CLO and ISB offices to the teams and the presenters at each week's meeting, a big thanks to the staff who provide the tea and coffee and tidy up between meetings. We wish you a happy and safe Christmas and look forward to reconvening again in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? We now move the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Environment Parks and Sustainability, councillor Davis, please.
I thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday 30 November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Landers that the report, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 November 2021 be adopted. councillor Davis.
I thank you, Mr Chair. Last Tuesday, we had a committee presentation on the wonderful partnership council has with the Warrinao Conservation Services, and I leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. No debate. Thank you. I now move this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Marks, the City Standards Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 30th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair. It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 November 2021 be adopted. councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I...
Point of order to you.
I just want to...
Once you get to your microphone, councillor Johnson, I'll recognise you.
Mr Chair, I've repeatedly drawn to your attention tonight that there is no quorum in this chamber, and you are continuing to conduct council business in breach of the meeting's local law. Can you explain why?
Quorum does, has been dipping in and out. We now have quorum. councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just want to take the opportunity...
And in each time, councillor Johnston, there has been quorum when you've raised it.
And I want to take the opportunity to thank, my thanks to all the officers in the City Standards portfolio. At this time, I wish them all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I also want to just say we had a report on the abandoned hazardous and unregistered vehicles, which was a fabulous report, and I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any debate?
Again, Mr Chairman, I draw to your attention that I will step out of the chamber and there is no quorum. You must maintain a quorum.
Please ring the bells.
I didn't think we did.
Sorry. We now move the report of the City Standards Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. councillor Howard, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 30th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 30 November 2021 be adopted. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. We had a committee presentation on the Brisbane Art Design, which was fantastic. I urge everyone to look at it on our, in our, what is it now, our big tin hub, because it's a fantastic presentation. I really want to thank Renee Grayson and her team for the wonderful work that they do. And I just want to finish by wishing each and every one of our council officers a very Merry Christmas and look forward to working with them in 2022.
Thank you. Is there any debate? No debate. We now move through your report. All in favour of this report? councillor Howard's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Huang, the Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 30th November be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 30th of November 2021 be adopted. councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd just like to say I can't see anyone on the other side of the council chamber. There's no Labour, there's no others. So just wish you everyone a Merry Christmas and see you next year.
Thank you. Any debate? I now move this report. All in favour of the report of councillor Huang, the Finance and City Governance Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, petitions, are there any petitions?
Yes, Mr Chair.
councillor Owen.
I have 167 petition letters in support of a future Calvile memorial.
Thank you. councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I've got two petitions. One is a petition to rename the wetland of Donaldson Street Park, Norman Park. And the other is for investigations into traffic management options in Brettinale Street, Norman Park.
Thank you. councillor Johnson, are you standing?
Yes, I have two petitions. One's a hard copy, one's electronic copy. 700 odd signatures calling on council to work with the state government to upgrade the cardross overpass.
Thank you.
And again, I'm leaving the chamber, and there is no quorum. And I just draw to your attention, Mr Chair, that it is your responsibility to maintain the quorum.
While you're here, we're still in quorum. councillor Johnston?
I have a petition too, councillor. That is, that we add Australia's very own Bletchley Park, Niambra House, 21 Henry Street Ascot, to the Queensland heritage list. Thank you.
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Howard that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No councillors standing. Are there any matters of general business? As there are no councillors standing, I declare the meeting closed, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, see you again here in February. Thank you, everyone.